I'd like to call this special meeting of Lakewood City Council for Monday, April 22. To order, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Barth, Councilmember Boecky, Councilmember Branstadter has been excused, Councilmember Moss, Councilmember Simpson, Deputy Mayor Whelan has been excused, Mayor Anderson, you have a forum.
Thank you. Now, would you all please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, our first item of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk?
This is the date set for a public hearing to consider the formation of a lake management district for American Lake.
And for this, we have Mr. Vigorin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just wanted to provide a little bit of background on American Lake, and we've talked about this a little bit in the past. American Lake, as you're aware, is infested with Eurasian water milfoil, which is a state listed noxious weed. And according to a diverse survey that we had done in 2018, milfoils covering about 118 acres of the lake shoreline, and that's up from 106 from the previous year. If it's left uncontrolled without any measures, it'll cover up to about 236 acres of the shoreline out about 15 to 20 feet in depth, so all the way around the lake. There's a map of the milfoil survey on page four of your packet. In 2017, the city was awarded a grant from the State Department of Ecology to prepare a vegetation management plan for American Lake. The plan was repaired, prepared with assistance from representatives from Camp Murray, JBLM, the VA, as well as residents around the lake. The plan recommends treating the lake with a chemical herbicide as the first step to control or eradicate the milfoil. Other measures include public education and outreach. The plan was approved by the Department of Ecology in August of 2018. The city recently secured a $75,000 grant from Ecology to help with the costs to treat the lake with a chemical herbicide. The total estimated project cost for the first year is about $142,000, and annual control efforts would be required after the first year, but to a much lesser degree. A group of lakefront property owners submitted a petition to the city council to form a lake management district in March of 2019, and it included sufficient signatures from property owners to meet the requirements of the state RCWs. A lake management district would pay for the, would be paid by the property owners on the lake, including the city, at a calculated rate of 66 cents a foot to fund lake treatment and other planned recommendations over a period of 10 years. The lake management district would tax all lakefront properties except the federal properties. We were also able to include Camp Murray in the process through a resolution of the Pierce County Council, which was confirmed by this council earlier this month. On April 1st, the city council passed a resolution establishing today as a time for a public hearing to be held on the proposed formation of a lake management district. In accordance with the RCW, all property owners of record within the proposed district boundary were notified by mail of the time, place, and purpose of the hearing, the nature of the work intended for the lake management district, and the annual assessment for each of their properties. Notice, the hearing was also published in the Tacoma News Tribune, and we also notified various state agencies as required per the RCW. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Vigorin? Just have a couple of matters for clarification for the audience. Now, Camp Murray, though military, is state property, is that correct?
Correct.
And has the state indicated preliminarily what their interest is in this lake management district?
Yeah, I think they'll, I think they'll be supportive of it. They, they were again at the table throughout the whole process of preparing the plan, and probably the biggest thing, kind of like with the federal property, is a matter of finding the money to pay for the, the treatment. But I think if they're included in the district, it'll be probably easier to find that money.
And the largest single property owner is the Department of Defense in, in the person, I should say, of JBLM, and have they expressed any interest in cooperatively pursuing this program?
They have, they've, I know the city manager's been in contact with the leadership out there, and, and they've definitely expressed their support of the plan.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, now, we'll move to the public hearing. If you wish to speak when I call your name, please come to the podium. The rules are relatively simple. You have up to three minutes to speak. The yellow light comes on as a 30-second warning, and the red light comes on when your time is up. You must limit your comments to the matter at hand, which is the formation of a lake management district for American Lake. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence, such as Paul Boecky, Lakewood, Washington. The first person who has signed up to speak is Mr. Jeff Cox.
I'm Jeff Cox. I live in Woodinville, Washington, but am one of the property owners on Silcox Island and am presently the president of Silcox Island Association. For a number of years now, as I'm sure you're aware, we have noticed the, the spread, the continued spread, and the, the increase in the density of Eurasian water milfoil and other noxious weeds within the lake. We recognize that this problem is bigger than any one entity can take on, on their own, either private owners or even, say, the city or Camp Murray. And we also recognize that if we don't do this in unison with all the property owners around the lake, that the problem will just spread back from wherever it's not treated. So, we've had members involved with the American Lake Improvement Club, and in the meetings where the city has given guidance is to try and come up with an approach. I'd like to compliment and thank both the American Lake Improvement Club and the city and their staff for the incredible work they've done to get the grants, not only to create the plan that's now been approved by Department of Ecology as to how to do the treatments, but also the $75,000 grant that has been, I don't know if awarded, but indicated that would be awarded to help with the treatment plan, and for their great coordination with the Camp Murray folks and the JBLM folks, because if we couldn't get them on board to support this either independently or within this framework, we'd have a big, I mean, we couldn't address at least half of the, of the land or the property shoreline that is affected. And it, so I, a lot of compliments, I think, go to your staff and what they've done in guiding this whole process forward. We have 26 property owners on Silcox Island, 22 that have shoreline property, 22 submitted signatures with the petition that came to you before. I've talked to the others, and all 26 members, all, all the 26 owners out there support this formation of the lake management district, together with our properties on Silcox Island and the property the association has on American Lake next to Bill's Boathouse, where we have our, some parking, and we have boat storage to get across the lake. We have about just under 3,200 feet of, linear feet of shoreline, which is about roughly 11 and 1/2 percent of the total private property ownership around the lake, so not Camp Murray, not JBLM, and not the city. So, we strongly support the sale and this lake management district as the means to be able to implement this treatment program.
The next person is Sandra Postel. Postel?
Hi, I'm Sandra Postel. I am a full-time resident of Silcox Island, have been for eight years, so I'm part of the city of Lakewood, full-time resident and voter. I also support this wholeheartedly, been working on it for about a year and a half, and there's been a lot of volunteer work by people around the lake. So, it's, this doesn't represent a bunch of people that just want money. People are really putting their time and effort into making sure the lake is taken care of. So, again, as Jeff said, the islanders are all for it 100%, and we hope that the other property owners along the lake will combine with us to be able to treat this, because the, you can't, you can't draw a line in the water, it's got to be a cooperative effort. So, we thank you and your staff for helping put this together. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up is Kurt Spingath. I'll apologize to everyone in advance for mispronunciations.
You did a good job on that one. My name is Kurt Spingath, and I'm a lakeshore owner up here in this upper right-hand corner of the, of the lake there. As you can see, I live in the blue, which is pretty much the threat zone and is, you know, uninhabited by the Eurasian water milfoil. So, all the weather comes from the southwest side, and so we, we will see all that repopulating to the, to the north, northeast there as, as time goes on if it doesn't get treated. I personally have been working on this project for the last two years as part of the stakeholders' group. I am the American Lake Improvement Club president and, and have been shepherding some of this through that group and along with the city and, and the military groups as well. So, I'm in full, as you would think, I'm in full support of treating the lake and getting this lake management plan put together and the lake management district. So, I encourage you to move it on forward as fast as possible, as time is short on getting the, the treatment done in normal time, as late June through, through July. So, we're kind of in a short timeframe. If we can move things along, you've already done that already by moving this meeting into where it is now, so thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Next person signed up is Dean Paulson. Then we go to Amy Paulson.
I'm Amy Paulson. I'm a 30-year resident of Lakewood. My husband is a 52-year resident of Lakewood. I'm all for healthy lakes, and we understand that there is this issue. Our concern is anytime there's a tax, sometimes there's not an end to the tax. So, you say 10 years, will it stop at that 10 years? That's one of my concerns. My other concern is, on the lake, we don't use it on the weekends during the summer because there are so many other people using the lake, and are you putting anything into place for those people? So, it's, it's, it's on the burden of the homeowners on the lake, and we pay a lot of taxes already. Are you planning to add higher boat launch fees for the people that are dumping their boats in that also bring different chemicals with them from other lakes that affect our waters? Those are some of the concerns we have. And then, is this, is this just an American Lake problem, or are we having other problems in other lakes? And the reason we say that is because with the taxes, you know, I, I don't use rapid transit, but I'm having to pay that tax, and so it's one of those, should this be a burden for everybody? Even though it doesn't seem like a lot, 10 years, it adds up. We wanted to, to make sure that when it's looked at, are there other avenues that you've looked at for funding? Is that all you wanted? Oh, and also, because a large portion of the lake is owned by the federal, are they, when you say they're supportive, are they supportive, or are they going to help us out financially? You know, saying you're supportive and then showing is two different things. So, are we getting some federal money to help offset their portion as well of the lake that they own? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Barbara Holt. Don't want to speak? Janet Spingath.
My name is Janet Spingath, and I live in Lakewood, on the same place as Kurt, on the lake. I am the, currently the Western Washington Public Interest Chair for the State Noxious Weed Control Board, and I can tell you that our concern at the state level for the spread of invasive aquatic weeds is quite, is quite high. Our boats are transporting things all over, up and down I-5, and back and forth between Idaho. So, we are very concerned. Anytime that a lake could be treated and treated quickly and effectively like this, we would be completely in support of this. So, I stand in support of that, and I'm speaking for the state board. Thank you.
Next person signed up is Trevor Walker.
My name is Trevor Walker. I live on American Lake next to Jeff Dahl. And Kurt, I think I know you from Helena chemical days. I think we need to address where this milfoil comes from. I personally witnessed lots of boats at the public boat launch with their props filled with crap, for lack of a better term, and are they being taxed for this? And is there any other control, biological or mechanical control being thought about? That's all I have.
Paul Krakow?
I'm Paul Krakow, and I've been a 35-year resident of American Lake. I'm here representing about 10 property owners in the country club and the club itself, and they are all very supportive of this action. I'd like to say the work that the staff has done, it's very appreciated what you guys have brought forward, and thankful that you're having this hearing. I spend a lot of time on the lake in the summer months, and I can tell you that the entire lake is in need of this service. One concern I have is that, as others have expressed, do we have the support of the military? Because without that, I think this is not, this is not going to work. So, I think that's really important. And then, I, I didn't hear in the discussion from staff, is this going to be a one-time spraying per year, or is this going to be multiple times? And then, what are they going to do? And proceeding here is will be a function of the type of growth they have, and then they'll tailor it to that. So, if you could come back after this hearing and give us a little bit more of the, some of those answers, that'd probably be beneficial. Also, very supportive of the, what you're calling the lake management district. The taxes, no one likes to pay taxes, but it's very justified, and therefore, we believe it's something that's definitely needed. With that, I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you. And the last person who signed up is Kim Rasmussen.
I too have been a resident on American Lake my entire life. I have a number of serious concerns regarding the application of herbicides to the lake, what the long-term impact may be if indeed that's going to be applied over a 10-year basis. I've attempted to do some research as to its effectiveness in other lakes. I've not found, in any case, in my research, that it has ever been 100% effective. Having been on the lake my entire life, I have seen the problems of weeds periodically as they come and go. I'm not certain that a chemical application is necessarily to the benefit of the lake residents. I'm concerned about my grandchildren, my pets. The application of these herbicides has not necessarily proven effective in the total eradication. This will be a continuing, ongoing problem which may never end, and I'm afraid that will be the same of our assessments. The idea that we can eradicate it with herbicides in an easy application is not the case. It will be an ongoing procedure. I suspect at the end of 10 years, if indeed this does take place, the problem will not be resolved, and we may witness some of the ramifications of the application of herbicides. It is a non-selective process. It kills the vegetation in the lake that will not benefit the wildlife, the fish. I would be hesitant to eat or partake in certain water activities when this is applied. I don't know how long it would be before the lake would indeed be safe. Other attempts to modify the environment of American Lake have not been effective. For those of us who can remember, the effort to clean out the predatory fish in the 50s, only to see them reoccur within a matter of years, shows that we can sometimes think we're doing something for the environment, and indeed, it proves to be not only beneficial, but it can be harmful. I hope you give adequate consideration, not only to the cost involved, but to the potential environmental impact that may take place. I'm also concerned, again, 50% of the lake is owned by federal and state government. We have no assurances of what part they will contribute. Thank you.
That's all the people who have signed up. That doesn't preclude you from testifying in the public hearing, and if you wish to testify, please step forward and queue up behind the mic. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak, please come forward at this time. See one gentleman coming forward. If you also wish to come, come up and queue up behind him, and we'll let you have your three minutes.
My name is Don Russell. I've been a resident on American Lake for 89 years. Essentially, the application of herbicides is controlled by the Department of Ecology. The application has been proven safe. This invasive particular plant is going to spread throughout the lake. Those who are concerned about their grandchildren living in the lake need to realize that the milfoil will entrap and drown small children who get entangled in it. I urge you to go ahead and approve the application of this particular herbicide, who's been approved by the Department of Ecology. And essentially, I want to compliment Greg Vigorin. He's been, has led this effort from the very beginning. I have great respect for him, admiration for him, and I urge you to go ahead and approve this particular application.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public, at the public hearing? Is there anyone else who wishes to testify here at the public hearing? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Before we move forward, Mr. City Manager, perhaps it would be Mr. Vigorin, could you bring the folks visiting us tonight up to date on the projected timeline of events going forward?
So, you're, Mr. Mayor, you're referring to the timeline of this process?
Yes.
Okay. So, the next thing, if council decides to move forward from here, would be to bring back a resolution to the city council on May 6th, which would approve moving forward with the question to the property owners as far as if they were to form a district or not. So, it'd be basically approving a ballot, which would then go out soon after May 6th, and we'd give, I think we have to give like between 20 and 30 days to get the ballots back.
So, to reiterate, this will be an agenda item for the council to approve the, for the election for formation of the district. That action would be taken on May 6th, and then it would be up to the property owners on a written ballot over a period of approximately 30 days to approve or disapprove the formation of the district.
That's correct.
Thank you. Then we move to unfinished business. We have motion number 2019-22. Madam Clerk?
Motion number 2019-22, continued from April 15th, 2019, authorizing the award of a construction contract to Miles Resources LLC in the amount of $973,921.25 for the construction of 123rd Street Southwest, Bridgeport Way to 47th Avenue Project.
Thank you. For this, we have Mr. Bucic.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to answer any questions you may have concerning the award of this construction contract, Miles. I understand last Monday, there were some questions relative to the requirement from the Lakewood Water the Lakewood Water District to the proposed development in the county's gravel pit site to upsize the existing eight-inch main in 123rd to a 12-inch main. That is outside of our normal purview and control and would not actually be something that we would normally, it would not rise the surface in coordination meetings with them because this is an independent driver, which is the development of the gravel pit. We found about, found out about this requirement very late in the game. In fact, at the time that we talked to the district, they hadn't yet even done a full assessment of their infrastructure to determine whether it should need to be a 12-inch. Prompting from myself and some staff got them out there the next day, they did confirm that the existing line in 123rd will not provide the fire flow for the proposed development at the county's gravel pit site. Earlier today, we sat in with a meeting with the, the, not the developer, but the gentleman who's representing the developer for the purchase of the property, Lakewood Water District, as well as Miles, who are proposed, who actually would be award of the contract for the road project, and a representative from Pierce County Executive's Office, to see if there was a way forward so that the water line could be built in advance to our project. What we are able to offer up is a delay in the construction of our project by not issuing the notice to proceed, once it's, we're available to, are able to award it, for a limited window of time so that they can work with the water district and potentially a private engineer to design it and have someone, whether that be Miles or somebody else, construct it in advance to our work. The concern is that the representative for the developer turned to the county representative and said, "Well, can the county find a quarter of a million dollars in order to go build the water line?" Because the Lakewood Water District, like, is standard for private utilities, they do not build infrastructure speculative. They have no guarantee of getting paid back. And they would need something in writing, legal, legal document basically assures that within a time certain, they would get their funding back should they agree to front the money to build the water line. The last time I spoke with the general manager, he had spoken to the board, this was prior to our opening the project, and they were pretty clear, they don't do land speculation activities such as building infrastructure. So I'm concerned that they would still not be willing to front the quarter million dollars for a proposal that is not yet, you know, firm in their minds. We don't even have an application, we have a SEPA that's been gone through. I can understand where they're coming from. Unfortunately, what that means is that they're not successful in getting the funding to do the work prior to the road project. When the development does occur, whatever nature it is and whenever it does occur, if it has the same fire flow requirements or greater, that, at that time, the water district will require them to replace the eight-inch line down 123rd with at least a 12-inch line. What that means for us is that when they come in and they cut our brand-new road, there is a provision that allows for them to put infrastructure in, but they're basically going to grind two inches off our six-inch road and they're going to put a complete new road surface on it. That's estimated between $100,000 to $150,000 of additional cost for the developer when they move forward to put that through. At this time, with the unknowns we have out there and plus the risk that if we were to take our project, throw away the bids or not award them, and then re-advertise it, the city will be paying more money for the project. It, the, right now, I'm concerned because the price of oil is going up and going up and going up. There is a clause in our contract, which is a standard contract clause after the last troubles with oil, which is the contractor can renegotiate the price of asphalt if it exceeds a certain percentage threshold. And the longer we delay on doing the work, the higher the probability we will be doing that and paying more. If we delay the project till, say, next year, then early, early next year, I will point out, in order to not lose our CDBG funding, we will pay, we will end up paying more as, from out of the general fund and the surface water fee, the fund. So my recommendation right now is that we award the contract, we continue to work with the developers representative of Lakewood Water District and Miles, to see within the next week to two weeks whether they can figure out how they can find the funding, get the water main built, and then how we're going to protect the city's interest in the bid that we have from Miles right now.
So I'd like to make one clarification before I go to other questions, is you, oh, there's some confusion, the way he represents himself. The person you were referring to is the representative of the developer is actually the county's broker. There is no identified developer at this point.
Thank you. I just knew he was representing, in my opinion, who was looking to develop.
He's spearheading entitlements, but he's not representing a, an identified developer.
All right, thank you.
So questions for Mr. Bucic? Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at the packet, I'm actually going to ask another question in the bid, the bid sheet. Help me out, there's the regular part and then there's the deductive alternative. What is the deductive alternative?
Thank you for looking at the bids. The deductive alternative was an attempt on our part to make sure that if the work costs us more than we can afford, there is, there is a turn lane on Bridgeport that is necessary because of the industrial development. That if it turns out that the cost claiming too high, we want to have the ability to deduct that from the total. With the bids that came in and the available funding that we have, we're including all of the work, just one shot to do it all at once.
Okay. So, so every, so what it's going to be is, we're going to complete this road. There is about half the road there, 123rd comes from Bridgeport. I think you said 600 feet, then there's a remaining 600 feet that would connect it to 47th. And this would bring it, the entire part to standard, plus the state's requiring us to do the little jog. And now we're also going to build the turn lane out there that they wanted.
Yeah, we determined the need for the turn lane when we started taking a look at the traffic impacts. The apartment complex as proposed out there didn't drive us to the turn lane. It was the fact that the, the industrial nature, the warehouses, the large vehicles and trucks, we started looking at that and saying, they don't have any place to safely queue on Bridgeport to take a left onto the new road. So we looked at that and we're going to need to widen the road a little bit in order to get us a turn pocket there to safely transmit the trucks around the corner onto the new road.
Okay. So we are going to do that now?
We are doing that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned that the price of oil could drive up the cost of the asphalt. Traditionally, the price of oil has always risen at this time of the year due to the season. And we have no way of knowing whether North Sea Oil, or Russian Oil, or any other oil will drive the price down. So to say that it may rise the cost, you could equally argue it also could leave the cost where it is. So now, based on that, given what you told us, how long could we bear to wait to see if the water district can work out a deal? What's the longest weekend time? Let's just say we take your recommendation tonight. What's the longest we can wait to see which way the price of oil breaks?
So you're absolutely right. The price of oil is dependent upon many different things, things worldwide. And there are a lot of people who make a lot of money every day guessing whether it's going up or going down. By the way, I'm not one of them. So what I look at is I look at the fact that the price of the fuels, the gas station is going up, which means the price of oil is going up. Now, it's not exactly the same product, however contractors are taking a look at that and they're trying to lock in prices. In the past, they might be able to lock in a price at an asphalt, asphalt batch plant for six or nine months. Now they're lucky and in a highly volatile market to get 30 to 60 days of a lock-in. I don't know, because I haven't spoken to Miles, what kind of timeframe they can lock these prices in, but it's not going to be more than a month or two. Plus, there's the other factor, as we were speaking today, Miles does have other commitments to other, you know, contracts.
One more question. Thank you, by the way, that was a good answer. Was there any sense in the discussion you had this afternoon in the room between Miles and the county? Did you get any kind of an indication that they could possibly work this out so that this work can be done in conjunction with our plans?
I'm hopeful. However, there's a couple of things that play into this. Because of the estimated price of the work, which is about a quarter million dollars for the water line.
Right.
If Lakewood Water District were to run this, they need to get three, three quotes, informal quotes. So they can do that, pretty much, we can have written quotes, but they don't have to go with a more rigmarole. Then they would have to award it to the lowest bidder, as we would expect. There's no guarantee that Miles would be the lowest bidder. Miles, of course, is very interested, expressed interest that if they were to build the water line, then they would be fine with delaying the road work because they would be able to tie the two together very neatly. They'd be able to go in while they're doing the water line work and they come right along behind and start doing all their paving work. So there were indications that they were very interested in getting, getting a bigger package deal. Unfortunately, the nature of the water line work and the nature of what we bid precludes us from doing a change order to add that. We would, we would have bid protests likely from all the other bidders and we would end up throwing the whole thing out. So not, not my recommendation. After the meeting, I do know that Miles spoke with the project manager and he spoke to me and told me that they're very interested in getting this project done quickly. So if they were to get the water line work, they'd probably be willing to. If they're not going to get the water line work, they want to get this pounded out so they can get to their other jobs.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So this only came to the attention of county executive's office after 5:00 today. So as far as the possibility of funding and without any identified source, it's difficult, but there's, there is some interest because it, it adds to the value of the pit property and the pit property is worth something in the neighborhood of 17 to 20-plus million dollars. And so a quarter million dollars to enhance the value and the saleability makes sense, but the same government budgetary restrictions and bidding impediments are in the way. So now that this has been brought to the attention of the chief operating officer and the facilities manager, public works, it might be a way they can find some way to front the money, but we'll see. Any other questions? An entertaining motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move motion number 2019-22.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Mr. Bulkey, seconded by Mr. Simpson, that we adopt motion number 2019-22. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Is there any other business to come before the special meeting?
No, Mayor.
Then, before we adjourn, I know we'll, we'll take about a break till after this meeting until quarter till, at which time we will commence a study session at the table down below. We're adjourned.
Beautiful. Really beautiful.
Oh, it's unbelievable.
Yep.
They have done some.
Whole little building.
Seven floors of stuff.
It's so cool.
We walked in off Broadway on the Spanish Steps, right into one bar area and then right into the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As soon as I went to the water.
Yeah.
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 Last person.
I don't think.
I tried this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
So.
Oh.
So it just shows you how you.
Only that's.
I was gonna say.
So we're not just like.
So.
Step in to speak.
Fair enough.
The only issue is only work can be out of the time.
Gotcha. Fair enough. Thank you.
Hello.
Come over there.
Minute's on.
Call this, get the right paper, study session of the Lakewood City Council for Monday, April twenty-second to order. The first item of business is a joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Welcome. See, we have a majority of the members here. And we'd like to go over your work plan for the next year and have a little Q and A. And so I go to Chair Gerwin and maybe you can introduce the members or do self-introduction. We know we'll see.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having us on the annual speak. I'm Jason Gerwin, Chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I'll let all the other members introduce themselves.
I'm Vito Yakubasi, Co-Chair.
Sylvia Allen.
And I'm Alan Billingsley.
I'm Elijah Raffles, Youth Council Liaison.
Mike Lackety.
Well, welcome. Jason, you want to?
So, yeah, I wanted to start and just kind of share some of our bigger accomplishments in two thousand nineteen. Again, we want to thank the council for their continued support. It's amazing to see how much we've grown in the years. And so we try to provide and give guidance on various topics throughout the year. Last year, we were extremely pleased to go over our Parks Capital Plan. The Parks Capital Plan is bigger and better than it's ever been. Both the community and council are investing in our parks and that's something that we've been asking for for a long time. So that was a, just to see that capital budget is huge for us and want to thank you for that. We reviewed special use permits and that process in advance of the pavilion coming online and kind of honed and dialed those in. Additionally, we work with all the service clubs in the community. We're working to try to finalize some signage where we can kind of recognize all those service clubs and the input they have to the community in kind of set locations rather than miscellaneous spots all around the city. We hosted a large public meeting at Edgewater Park to solicit feedback on updating the master plan and getting some improvements done there. The budget, nineteen twenty budget, we reviewed and submitted, you know, our comments and thoughts on that. And again, we appreciate your support that we've gotten there. And then numerous other presentations and work that we, you can read for yourselves on the paperwork. But again, what we're doing in parks is huge. The staff, Mary Dodsworth, Scott Williams, Sally, I mean, the effort that those three individuals are putting in and the results that they are achieving is phenomenal and deserves to be recognized. So that rolls us into two thousand nineteen and Vito's gonna share with you what our two thousand nineteen work plan looks like.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for this opportunity to get together and chat and talk about what we're doing this year. Like Jason mentioned, we had a great meeting, a public meeting on the Edgewater Park Master Plan. In January, we came back and staff had put together three drafts of what the park could look like in the future. It was a really good meeting, had some good discussion. Right now, staff is rolling it up into kind of a final draft to look at and that should be available at the end of this month or early in May. So good work there on the Edgewater Park. Harry Todd Project Update. City of Lakewood received a number of grants and right now they're currently putting together the final design and project status and we'll hear more about that. There's a lot of things happening there at Harry Todd Project Park or Project Update. Next Monday, we are gonna host a Wards Lake Master Plan update here in the chamber and get other ideas of what to do there at Wards Lake. We've had some issues in the past, which we'll hear about in a little bit, but we want feedback. So you're all welcome to attend that. That's at five thirty next Monday. Last Friday, we kicked off the Legacy Plan Update Stakeholder Group Focus Group. We will have ongoing updates back to council and to the park board on an ongoing basis and we'll have that wrapped up probably the first quarter of two thousand twenty. We, on a regular basis, monthly meetings, we have regular updates on our capital improvement projects and updates, which so we got a lot of feedback and discussion on how they're going and is there issues and how we can support some of those projects. Next month, we are gonna look at, staff's gonna have the Clover Park School District Cooperative Use Agreement and we'll look at that and provide feedback on that. It's been a great relationship in the past and we hope to continue that. Next month, we are also going to talk about updates on the park code and there's been recommendations to fine-tune these, better understand maybe some issues associated with some park code elements and make sure that they're safe for the park visitors. So some of the topics that we're gonna discuss is metal detecting that's happening in our parks and especially in historic areas of our parks and then the damage that it creates in park space. Alcohol in parks, how we're gonna use it at the pavilion and community events and maybe we need to fine-tune that a little bit. Camping in parks and the encampment issue. Staff is looking at policies and protocols. We're gonna meet with Heidi, the city attorney, and we'll chat about regarding that issue and the impact on the city. So that's coming up. Geocaching is another one that has been, has grown in popularity and more complicated and we'll dive deeper into that. Smoking in parks. A few years ago, we had a good discussion on smoking in parks and now marijuana is legal. Vaping is more and more popular. Is it time to review that policy and is it updated enough? So we wanna look at that and discuss that. Drones are another one that, or drones, we've established an area at Fort Silicon Park. There's a lot of comments and complaints reports about flying outside of those zones. So should we relook at that and what should we do? So we're gonna look at those. On your sheet, you should also have a list of special events that we host that year throughout the year and a lot of them are very popular and they're growing in popularity. Families, friends all attend. And now I will turn it over to Alan.
I have a kind of a question and a comment for the council as a whole. The feeling is we've gone through the past year or two. We have added a number of big, nice assets to our community parks, the pavilion, et cetera. And these have been done largely with cooperation from public service groups and members of our community. And they are a wonderful asset and a great way for the city as a whole to partnership with some of the other groups to accomplish things we otherwise couldn't. But there's also a dark side, which requires that the gifting of the pavilion, for instance, requires a maintenance and increase the maintenance fee for the park. And it's not just that that single facility, but it's the, as our city grows, park use becomes more, sports becomes used more, parking becomes more. And I just want to feel the council out for where are we for support for the parks in future? When we look at funding, as our city grows, are we looking at supporting the growth of our parks also? And is it still one of the main priorities for our city? We have a group that's interested perhaps in putting in a splash pad in two or three years. If the splash pad's completely funded by these groups, it's still gonna leave a legacy with the Parks Department of maintenance for this on an ongoing basis. And this is the sort of partnership that needs to have the city council's approval, wholeheartedly, for it to work. And I mean, it's a great asset for our city, but it's also a liability as we move forward. So I'd like to hear from some of our city council people how you feel about these sort of projects and the parks as a whole.
Mr. Whelan.
I've never been one to fear the creation and addition of livable city amenities that attract families and their children to come and invest and live here. I think that it does come with a responsibility, though on the maintenance side. It would be interesting to get a sense of where we are budget-wise because at one point we had a target for certain recoupment pricing of the park amenities for users, user fees, and we had a target of what, eighty, eighty-seven odd percent, whatever it was, Mary, I forget what it was. Forty-five percent that would be paid toward the overall cost. So it would be good to kind of test that and see if that's actually doable in light of the increasing maintenance costs that you foresee. But I, for one, and I'm sure the others would likewise say as well, we are a council that will continue to support parks. We believe it's important. As the infrastructure in the city grows, it's my opinion that economic development activity will continue to grow and there will be sufficient revenues to support the things that we hold dear, which to me, in part, is parks.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You asked a direct question. You'll get a direct answer. Deputy Mayor Whelan put his finger right on it. We support the parks. Now, that doesn't mean that we're unaware of liabilities and so on and so forth, but the idea is that as the city continues to grow, and there is nothing to suggest over the last five to seven years that the city isn't growing, then that will continue. The only concern that I have heard and that I sometimes have is as follows. In our desire to have a park system that keeps up with all of this, do we run the risk of losing the spirit of what a park is? In other words, the parks are wonderful, but as we continue to add amenities to that park, does that park start to look a little more like Disney World and less like a park? So that, sir, is my answer to your question is we support you. Keep doing what you're doing and I think we'll take it one issue at a time.
Yes, Mr. Yakubasi. No, you, Jason.
And so I'd just like to respond to Mr. Simpson on that and I think that's kind of our vested interest as a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is to not let our parks kind of turn into amusement parks and to sustain and monitor that development within the parks so that's sustainable. But you've also have, as you bring on new infrastructure, you have old and aging infrastructure that you have to keep up with. And it's very easy to fund the sexy new projects, being pavilions or whatever that next new project is. It's not very sexy to replace a roof or to, you know, maintain a water line. And so that's where, as we age and grow up as a city, we're gonna have to recognize the increased burden that maintenance is gonna have where we talk about that dollar bill and how much chopped up of that dollar bill goes where. That maintenance is gonna be more and that's not just within parks. That's gonna be within your swim department, within your street department. All of those kind of big four departments, they're the ones who suck a lot of your resources. And so it's developing sustainably and, but also keeping the commitments where we want those commitments kept.
Mr. Bulkey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll do my best to chime in. I think, I think we're quickly reaching that point anyway of where we're at right now with the parks and some of the other activities such as maintenance of way and stuff that the Parks Department really is having to do on the roads and whatnot. So I think we quickly are reaching that point where we're gonna need, now whether that's the seasonal personnel we can get by with or it's gonna, or we're gonna need one person full-time and more people seasonal, I don't know. But the next budget round, we're probably gonna have to look at that. And I will, to dovetail with the thoughts of Mr. Simpson and to move into other things like the capital improvement plan, I do have concerns that we have one huge park and we have a few small ones. And every time an idea comes up, it's, hey, let's put it at Fort Silicon. Fort Silicon's at the far western edge. I mean, we've done a fantastic job at Springbrook and we're gonna, we're pretty well gonna finish that project going forward. But really, when outside groups come with capital plans, it has to fit in to our capital plans, right? It has to go into the CFP. And so, you know, the decision on, is it gonna be in the CFP? What's the timing of it? And where is it going to go is going to be the council's or should be the council's. I think that's one of the lessons we've learned. That, you know, letting an outside group to say there, now, and let's just short-circuit any schedule was, although we love the end product, it was probably not, from a public policy standpoint, the best idea. So I think as you go forward with the Legacy Plan, we need to start thinking about what the next big thing is, right? And we already have plans. I mean, we've already agreed in principle to the H barn concept, right? Which, but in principle, again, and the barn isn't gonna move, so that's there. So we know what that is, but when you start talking about a splash pad, which everybody wants and I would love to see, and you start talking about neighborhood needs, we really need to start talking about where the next big, big thing is, right? And I look at Springbrook as a big thing, but it took two decades, right, to assemble. We talk about downtown, but I, and that's fine if you want to pursue that, but that's gonna be probably a bond issue that's gonna have to go forward to the voters, in my mind, I would think, because I just don't know how we would come up with the money to buy it, build it and do all those things. So that, I mean, that's to give you where I'm at and just looking for opportunities. But I think you gotta, in the Legacy Plan, you have to start looking towards what are we missing? And then where would those, where would those locations be? And where could we do some things? Where are the opportunities? Mr. Gerwin.
And so, Mr. Bulkey brought up a good point, something that I wanted to make sure that council is thinking about. And it's, you talk about that critical mass and the amount of users and the impacts it's having on the parks. And we're losing a lot of open and green space in the city. You know, you had, there's a couple of school properties that used to be open and available to people that are now closed. You have Fort Silicon Golf Course that is now closed. You know, Fort Silicon Golf Course, although not owned by the city, owned by the state. You know, I'd love to see the city get into talks with the state about keeping that some sort of green space. Now, I know they've got their hospital issues and maybe looking to that, but that would be a huge loss to the city. And so it's, in a built-out city, where are you gonna find those green spaces? Because once they're gone, you can't get them back. And so it's preserve them now while you still have them before they are gone. Or you're gonna come to the Springbrook philosophy or what they did with, you know, Great Smoky Mountain National Park, where you're gonna have to buy up parcels to then create a park. And so thinking about it now, I think is a much better time to be thinking about it.
Well, both, you know, the Fort Silicon Golf Course, the former game farm and the Chambers Bay Gulch are all zoned open space. I don't think that there's anything that the city council would do to change that. It would, we are in danger and sometimes of having the state legislatively override anything we choose to do. That's where the danger would come from. As one council member, I would say I'm concerned that our expansion enhancements, two different things, expansion enhancements to the park. two different things, expansion enhancements to the park, is pretty much reached the limit of, or caused us to reach the limit of what we can take care of at the current budgeting level. And so you can't get the tanks too far out of the fuel trucks. And although I would hope that we remain opportunistic like we have been at Springbrook where by hook or by crook, we've been able to pick up parcels and patch them together into a park that didn't exist. We do have to be cognizant that at some point we need additional resources to maintain them at the appropriate level. And while we may have a higher cost recovery on programmatic things, there's, play equipment ages, people have to mow the grass. Buildings need to erose. Plumbing deteriorates. And so I don't want to have us be one of those, one of those municipalities that balance the budget by watching things decay.
I don't see us doing a metro park district.
And it may be that we have a park district sometime and maybe that's cooperative with some other folks around us. You know, and so you just have to see what opportunities there are to make it sustainable in the long run. Because I think in the urban environment, I agree with you, we need to make, we need to make more open space, not less. And at the same time, we've got a lot of development pressure. And a GMA that was designed by people who had no idea what the consequences would be or decided not to care.
At one time, you know, a lot of the parks that we inherited came from Pierce County Parks. And I don't think Pierce County Parks ever wanted to see the parks deteriorate to the state they were in when we took them over. And the strides we've made in those parks is huge. And so, you know, the road, the best intentions are just that, they're just intentions. And so we just need to make sure we're acting as a city.
Well, one of the, you know, one of the interesting phenomena in parks is whether it's the county or municipalities, the Institute of Parks Impact Fee and then devoted exclusively to capital. So you can keep buying things, but you don't have any money to take care of them.
Mr. Whalen.
Have you guys revisited as part of the work plan, the business plan for the pavilion and/or potentially the H barn? If and when it ever gets renovated? Because that is either going to be a big black hole for maintenance, right? For either one of those two facilities. Or it's an opportunity for income production through prudent stewardship and planning for the business activities.
So we did review our special use permit last year for it. I don't, can't say we focused much on the H barn. It's still a little far out there, but it was more for the pavilion and how can that pavilion then, how can that policy relate to other facilities in the future? Thinking of the H barn, but I can't say we were specifically when we looked at those special use permit.
Not the permit per se, I was thinking more of the business plan that went into generation and gestation of the idea for the pavilion. So we've kind of taken another look at that for 2019 just to see what our target markets are. I know we're already well into 2019, but how does it look? Do we have people and users who are willing to pay money to rent it?
And that, I don't have that information. I'd have to look at staff for that.
Just to follow through, you know, we're still in the process of adding enhancements this year. And so we do have a couple of different groups that are interested in actually renting it for events like the Dog-a-Thon and the Cyc Cross event in December. So we're kind of working around our construction dates to support those events. We did have a business plan that was kind of a slow grow, small events, large events. And we think once we finish that this year, we'll really be able to start looking at those outcomes and making those.
Especially having bathrooms and.
We'll have bathrooms. It's really going to be pretty. And I think once, like most of the things in our community, a lot of word of mouth. And then with the concert series, we'll be using it for the concert series and so people will be there. They'll see it, start thinking about other ways it can be used. And so we do think that we'll be able to hit those marks on that business plan. I think initially we talked about, we didn't really have a timeframe for that because we thought, you know, it might have been built sooner than it was and started after. But it's in phases and we'll get there. And because it's brand new, it doesn't take as much maintenance at this point. So I think we're in a good position. And we'll keep looking at that like we do with all of our operations on an annual basis. And then of course every two years to make sure that we're plugging in the resources that we need, not just for the operation maintenance, but then, you know, the marketing, the impact, the events, the activities to make it successful.
Cool. Thank you. I have a yen for that. That's good.
Ramibi or, ramibi or Philippine pesos or?
Actually, yeah. Pass that down to the mayor.
So you did mention on your work plan, something about camping in parks. Aside from banning it, which it is, I think the only, the only legal question that I'm aware of is if somebody does, if somebody gets kicked out when the park is closed and they're, they can't take their stuff with them, how do you process it? Not that they can be there or not.
That's the part that we need to understand and make sure there's good follow-through. So I think next month, if we have that on our agenda item, is further discussion and sorting that out so that we're doing it right and we don't get in trouble.
And as far as one council member is concerned, a shopping cart is not their property, by the way. It goes a different direction.
That was a tent. And so I can tell you, you know, I, working in parks for the city a federal way, we've been hit really hard and has a huge impact on those green belts that we were just kind of talking about. And I literally could probably send, I've got a 14-person crew and I could literally clean up homeless camps five days a week and have them do nothing else. And so it's a regional problem. And you may not be aware of all the places that it is until you find out. And the safety protocol and the money needed to be invested to just resolve the issues that pop up, not even talking about trying to solve a huge problem, a big societal problem. There are going to be impacts and it's going to be big impacts to your, you know, it's going to be your big three. It's going to be your swim, your parks and your streets. And so it's making sure you got the right protocols in place for your employee's safety. And then it's, it's that additional task and it can't really be additional duties as assigned. There needs to either be additional staffing to help resolve that, contract money, because it's cumbersome problem.
All I am saying is from this committee's purview, I think it's, how do you process camping in parks? Camping is not allowed. That's a parks deal. It doesn't have to do with right-ofaways. It doesn't have to do with the policy. That comes from a different direction because we aren't Seattle and we're never going to be Seattle. And so there's a practical problem about how to process somebody's stuff if they're kicked out of a park and they can't take it with them. Because the night circuit screwed up and you got to deal with it. But you can't deal with it and you don't have to allow them to be there. That's happening some other places where they're allowed to be there because it's too difficult to deal with. It's not going to be too difficult to deal with in Lakewood. They aren't going to camp in parks. So it's a processing issue and.
And we're seeing the biggest impact, it's not about us and the space. We can identify and know that we're there. It's the ability to then go and monitor. Because once they've been encamped in these places, they know it's an easy spot. And so as soon as you clear a camp, they're going to move somewhere else. You move that camp, they move somewhere else and it kind of becomes this circle. And you, I mean, we've picked up same encampments at the same location multiple times. And it's, it's because we don't have the people up north to be able to monitor and keep them out so they can't reestablish.
Unfortunately, because of Federal Way's location, it doesn't have the advantage we do, which is, there's better stuff in Olympia.
Federal Way, apparently.
A news report and some, during the cold weather snap, we didn't have facilities. So they were sent where they had facilities in Seattle where they could go someplace warm. But the mayor of Seattle didn't appreciate that very much, I can tell you that.
So that's another argument for bus tickets.
An update for the council on the state game farm. The Washington State Fish and Wildlife has formed an advisory committee to formulate a plan for all the South Sound wildlife areas, of which ours is the premier area. It includes McNeil Island and several other smaller areas. And Sea Liquid has Mary Dodsworth and myself on that committee and they are working on a plan that will hopefully define the future of that as a wildlife area for at least the near future with the state's policy for it. There are some issues in it, for instance, endangered turtle species. It's known to be in, in fact, one of the few habitats in the state. Pacific pond turtle is in that area and has been used for breeding for other areas. They're trying to get transplant out of it. But then ultimately their goal is to maintain that area as a wildlife area with use for people and recreation because the wild fish and wildlife is a recreation-based government agency. And so I'm optimistic that their long-term use for that area is going to be to the benefit of our city as a recreational area as well as wildlife refuge. More to come as that progresses over the next year.
Any other comments from the committee?
Thanks for what you do. You, I know you're a very engaged group and appreciate the wide range of expertise that you bring to the, to the group and to the city for a less than exorbitant cost. So thanks for all you do.
Next up is an economic development update with Mr. Buer and Ms. Newton.
I have, I have some woven kind of art tapestries, really cheap ones that got to market. A shi-shi dog and a couple of Okinawa shi-shi dogs. And I've had them hanging in my bathroom for 30 years. Right outside the bathroom, I guess, in my bedroom. I remember going through the market, oh, that was, that was, and this one kind of matches. About that big. They're like a placemat. I knew what a shi-shi dog was. Exactly. I knew. I knew you were going to have style tonight.
Okay, good evening.
Ms. Newton.
Yes, it is. Okay, this is an update of economic development activity primarily for the first quarter of this year. We'll be discussing strategic plan performance, permitting, accomplishments, major developments and so forth. And so first of all, starting with the strategic plan performance, looking at a couple of years overall. And so the first thing on the item that we're looking at is reducing commercial vacancies. And as you can see, the office vacancies have come down fairly significantly while retail vacancy is fairly flat. I will note that there have been additional retail, as you know, added to the market as well. Increase in commercial property value has gone up significantly as well over that two-year period. Increase in local jobs, as you can see, we've increased about 1,000 jobs in that period of time. Increase in local businesses. We have several more businesses in the Lakewood area, a mix of home-based as well as commercial locations. Increase in permit volumes, as you know, permitting has gone up significantly in the last couple of years. As well as, the other thing that we're really working on hard is to reduce the permit review times and to create more permit predictability. And that continues to fall. And we have something that we are actually meeting on starting tomorrow. And our whole development team is looking at how can we be the best permit location basically in the state of Washington? So that's kind of a goal that we're working on, are working towards. Increasing tourism dollars, the dollars obviously have increased significantly. More hotels, tourism increasing, more disposable income as folks retire and so forth. And that is just a representation of hotel stays only, not other monies that have been spent in the community. Increase in education and trade school. So Pierce College and CPTC have been down slightly. And that's mainly due to, the economy is very good, so people are working. And so there is a bright spot in terms of Pell Grants, more Pell Grants on the horizon. So that will help folks to be able to afford college going forward. I did speak with the folks from Commercial Driving School and their enrollment is up significantly. And they're also adding partnerships such as partnering with folks that do drywalling as an example and bringing some of those trades into their organization to help to increase where there's a gap. And then several of the goals that we're working on for the strategic plan, as you can see there, dynamic, robust, local economy, infrastructure increases, increasing competitiveness, diverse housing and so forth. Okay, we recently completed a key fact sheet just to kind of look at an overall of Lakewood and how we are doing. Of course, Lakewood is very diverse, racially diverse. We also have a significant veteran population. Income is sometimes a challenge because we have a lot of higher-end and a significant amount of poverty that is increasing unfortunately. So our median income is fairly low as compared to other areas. So that's something that we have to look at as well. And there is a link, I'm sure many of you have looked at the link to the full fact sheet, which is located on our website. And just to kind of review what it takes to be successful, location is very important, of course. We also look at quality of life. Housing is becoming increasingly more important because not only affordability. Workers need a safe and healthy, attractive place to live. And that will not only attract talent to the area, but keep them here long-term. And then there are a number of legislative asks. Some of them here listed above are on our legislative agenda. A military benefit zone, which is a zone that is created within two miles of the JBLM border. And that would allow the city of Lakewood to bond on infrastructure improvements against future retail sales tax as an example. Unfortunately, I don't think that's moving forward this year, but it's something we can go forward with or try for again in the coming years. This would help as an example for the Pacific Highway development or redevelopment. And also Amtrak station assessment, potentially in the telecom area. Don't believe that one is moving forward either, but it's something we can work on in the coming years as well. Common interest ownership for condominiums. I believe that one has passed both the House. I believe that one has passed both the House and the Senate. And that one is basically a new Washington Uniform Common Interest Ownership Act that provides guidance on the rights and obligations of the associate, association and owners of condominium. And then just a few other, several other bills that we are kind of following through the Washington Economic Development Association as well as AWC. The budget negotiation is for associate development organizations such as the Economic Development Board of Tacoma Pierce County. And that allows funding for those types of organizations to promote economic development. There are several others that we're watching. Broadband Initiative that creates a governor statewide broadband office and Public Works Board Grants and Loan Programs supports that and authorizes port districts to provide internet services. And the data center one is to support incentives, not only for rural data centers, which is what currently is allowed, but also for bill, a bill that will make incentives eligible for non-rural, rural areas. Several others, commercial office space allows for local options outside of King County to incentivize development of commercial office space in the area. Manufacturing, BNO credits and taxes to support those types of businesses and so on. And then I wanted to touch briefly on economic ecosystem health. And there's a link to a brochure that we've created for the city of Lakewood that we're calling Choose Lakewood. I don't know if you've touched on that, but that's something that's also on our website. The components of this also include, you know, business attraction, expansion, retention, community outreach, being able to get information and data out to the community and businesses such as our Lakewood Index publication and economic indicators, better metrics, research and data going forward. We always like to make the, that information available and increase the quality of, of the data as we go along. And of course, working with our military is very important and helping those transitioning out to work and helping to fill the gaps in, in the workplace. And then moving on to community and economic development in terms of permit predictability, I kind of touched on that a little bit earlier. And that's very important to us. We'd like to, to continually work on that and become the place really to go for permitting predictability and ease connection to, between our staff and those developers and, and owners in the marketplace.
I have a question for you on that.
Yes.
Do we do any sort of after-project review or survey from developers of those who come to the permit counter to say, how did we do for you? Is there anything we could have done better?
I, I, well, in terms of the permit counter, I'm not sure what that is. We do, I do a lot of follow-up with, with clients myself to kind of see, especially if they did have issues or something that they needed to work through to make sure that they, that got resolved.
Not on a formal basis, on an informal basis, yes. I do have regular conversations with current planning, also with the Plans Examiner currently in my role as acting building official, I hear quite a bit. So yes, it's something that we are attentive to. I can let you know that we are spending an inordinate amount of time on trying to improve permit operations right now.
To do what?
Improve permit operations.
The online?
Online. My understanding is, is I think we're at 70% online. And so we are also in the process of changing all our forms over to online process, creating more fillable forms. Seems like lately we've been doing one new fillable form every week. But there's, there's a lot of things kind of going on as we try to do the changeover. The other thing that's out there that would make a big change is moving to the Pierce County online permitting system. I've been waiting on Pierce County for a while and hopefully we get closer and closer to that.
And the reason why I ask is when you look at the goals, which I support, permit predictability, ensuring certainty in the development review process, is how do we measure success if we don't get more feedback from folks? And I think, I hear anecdotally, because I'm in the world out there, development stuff, you know, it's kind of a mixed bag. Some people say Lakewood is great to work with, other people have said, eh, I don't know if I'd work there again. And I, I always want to ask why? What was the issue that you had?
We do track, you know, the, the, how quickly permits are processed. One of the things that we're trying to do is improve upon the quality of the permits that come into the permit counter. That's, that has been an issue that on the other side can delay a permit.
Permits coming to the permit counter, what do you mean by that?
The permits themselves, the quality of the permits as they are submitted by the developers, often they lack information.
The quality of the application?
Yeah, quality application.
Okay. And sometimes that can be had by better pre-app meetings?
Yes. We've also changed the pre-app process so that when a pre-app is held, all the notes from all the various departments are collected prior to the meeting and then provided to the developer or the project proponent via email prior to the meeting. So they've had an opportunity to review the notes and then ask questions. That actually speeds this up.
Got it. No, I'm, I'm all on board. I just would love to get to the point where we've got a streamlined process and good feedback.
We also do track our permit review times for used permits and so forth. I can tell you that at this moment, we're just behind. We're about five to six weeks behind on building permits. So in a way to resolve that, we've now hired outside plan review. So, and then we also now provide for, if you want it, willing to pay the price, enhanced review to get your permit faster. But that's only covering plan review. I cannot do it for planning or for engineering.
So is, is there a sense, Dave, of seasonal predictability? So when we get to these points, and I know every economic cycle is a little different, but where we could foresee perhaps that, geez, we're going to need some help here and to avoid a five to six week backlog, perhaps we need to hire somebody sooner than later?
Well, that was part of the reason why we've hired outside plan review, a third-party review. That was just approved last week.
Okay.
And we are beginning to see a, a big pickup in permit activity. We've also had a lot of enforcement issues of late. And we don't have a building official, so we're sort of down one person.
Okay. Mr. Simpson? No, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. So I'm just curious, I want to follow up on what the deputy mayor said about using outside sources to speed up the whole permitting process. Is it more cost-effective to do that than to bring on staff on a full-time basis?
Through a contract process?
Yep.
We've tried that before and it didn't work very well. Ended up taking just as long because the people were not familiar with the permitting process. And we actually hired AHBL to work with us on a variety of permits and plan reviews. And I did not find that to be terribly successful. You spend a lot of time having to go back and check the work.
So you would be amenable if there was a conversation about growing the staff by one or two?
This topic will resurface again later this year when we take a look at the department's cost recovery analysis.
Thank you.
And that was my question. When, when's the last point at which we had a cost recovery analysis completed and when's the next time we can expect an updated one?
It, my understanding is that we do it every two years. So you did it and we did it in 2006, 2017. So we're coming up on that cycle and the idea was to give it to the council in roughly August, September timeframe.
All right. Okay, and this, and through our experience and through our BRE outreach and so forth, we have developed several forums, educational forums and so forth. And Finance and Tax Code, as an example, we just completed a forum on disaster preparedness for business and also a Government Contracting 101. And we partner with Pierce County, the Chamber and other folks on some of these events and as well as the Washington State Procurement and Technical Assistance Centers. And then our Lakewood Developers Forum will be June 13th. And we also participate with Lakewood Chamber on their monthly workshops and networking. And there will be another purchasing forum in October. And this is just a sampling here of new companies for quarter one of 2019. We took quite a bit of time kind of looking through the different businesses that are coming in. A lot of construction, a lot of healthcare, professional services, a lot of home-based, 71 of the 125 new businesses are home-based. So a lot of new companies starting up online, professional services and so forth. And then there's a breakout by industry, by the number of businesses as well.
The home-based numbers, so that you know, do not include adult family homes. I wanted to be clear. What's on the home-based?
It doesn't include adult family homes or secondhand sales either. And then one of the other things we did, which we touched on briefly at the last Economic Development Update, was a business survey. So we're going to do this yearly. We didn't get a lot of participation in the first year, but we're hoping to, to get a lot more for 2019. And just to touch on some of the results from that, of course, there's a link to the full report as well for 2018. So most are optimistic and plan to either remain the same or expand. Sales are increasing for the most part. Workforce is one of the biggest challenges for businesses right now. A general satisfaction of services for the city is very good. And then, so we basically have very, as you know, small, small companies, young companies, more, we're seeing more part-time work for folks to afford or to avoid the cost of full-time employings, employees. And many of our companies, by the nature of where we're at, excuse me, in Pierce County, do export or import goods as well. And there's just percentages on types of businesses. And many of them have business plans, while many of them do not have succession plans, as an example. And then the, and then we found out what types of forums and that's how we decide which types of forums to have here at the city. And just some more statistics, of course workforce, highest respondents needs were workforce, more services, expanded services for customers and employee training and so forth. Okay, and some of the, this is recent accomplishments. Basically, over the last couple of years, these are major projects basically that have been developed or are, few of them that are listed here are breaking ground this year such as the Spring Hill Suites, Wood Spring Suites. And also the Starlight Distribution, which is an industrial development on the Starlight, which is currently the Starlight Swap Meet property. And then moving on, just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on where we're at for Woodbrook. This is kind of what the, the map looks like right now. Of course, you know about the Panatoni Project that was built, 467,000 square foot building, which is occupied by two distribution international freight forwarding companies, DAMCO and Geodis. The school property is under contract and will close probably in stages due to the nature of, of this closing. We have 700 and or so thousand square foot of industrial space planned on that 39 acres. And then just to the left, there is another project proposed, which is not currently zoned industrial, but there is a proposal that will be coming forward to expand the industrial business park footprint. And if that moves forward, then there will allow for more industrial outside of the current area that is zoned. And then to the right of the Panatoni Project, there is 10 acres. It's currently a multifamily project that will redevelop into an industrial as well. Probably not until next year likely, but there is a vacant five-acre parcel that is just adjacent to that. They'll move, move forward on that one sooner, probably with, break ground within the next few months or so. And that's about 150,000 square foot property or project. And then on the corner of Woodbrook and 146, there is about seven and a half acres and there's 160,000 square foot property or project proposed. Not sure that will fit on that property, but it's coming in for a pre-app. And then just to the, adjacent to that one, there's another six and a half or so acres for sale. So as you can see, there's some projects filling in and so we're excited to see that activity.
So the, the middle project you're saying is going to be phased in?
Where the...
Phoenix.
Yes, Phoenix Capital currently is 10 acres, which is a multifamily right now. Most of them, I think all of them are a month to month. Many of them have moved out, but there's still a handful. We do have some issues currently with some of the units, so that's going through the rental housing safety program right now.
Is that a group of Chinese investors?
Yes, that's part of it, yes, correct.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, they're the ones who were, the, the, the condition and potential uses of the property were misrepresented to them, when, to the investors by a promoter and they got taken. And they have put a bunch of money in it trying to turn it in another direction.
Okay. Okay. Oh, yes.
Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we don't have a lot of space, but is there any interest in developing a senior living space other than what we have currently?
So a senior, like assisted living, housing?
No, housing for seniors that...
Oh, yes, yes, we have had several inquiries for that actually. And their preference is to be, for the most part, in the central business district right now.
But I will tell you that when you start taking a look at what's selling, I mean, what's being built, so the Rannier Terrace was just recently completed off of 108th Street. They had a 30-day period in which to fill 11 units. They filled all 11 units and are charging over $1,700 a month. So that gives you an idea what the market looks like for...
Yeah, I get a lot of requests on that, that's why I was asking a question.
Thank you.
Senior living.
Okay. You're welcome. Okay. So moving on, recent accomplishments. So we have recently completed the comprehensive plan chapter for the Economic Development Update. Tiffany Spear has done the majority of the work on that piece. And cost recovery update, anything to add on that, Dave? Yeah, we've already kind of talked about that. And then, of course, the downtown subarea plan.
Right now, just so the council is aware, we have about $200,000 in the pipeline for traffic mitigation fees. Just to give you an idea that there's quite a bit of a level of development activity occurring in a very short period of time since, since the ordinance became effective November 1st, where? All over.
It's in the CBD. A minute, much of it is tenant improvements, increasing the level of activity. We've seen... We've seen that within the Mon Wigg properties and RPAI, and we've seen a few other tenant improvements. There's about twelve projects in, in process at the moment. Two of them are new buildings, and ten of them are tenant improvements.
Okay. All right. So, infrastructure, major catalyst projects, of course. We're very excited about the Lakewood Colonial Plaza, Colonial Center Plaza. Of course, you all know that it's under construction, and we continue to work with Pierce County Library Systems. The property in Telecom just closed last week as an FYI, and so, the city now owns that property. We can use it for, obviously, any civic purpose, but could be used for the library.
Do you know what it's zoned?
What it's currently zoned? Um, I think that it had, it was a mobile home park. I'm trying to remember. I think it's, is it NC2?
I think it's NC2.
I believe it, I believe it is NC2.
NC2, and it's currently not occupied?
It's vacant, correct. And will be fenced this week, FYI. And then, the one-hundred-and-twenty-three, Twenty-third Street reconstruction this year as well, connecting Bridgeport to Forty-seventh, and that will help with a number of projects, proposed multifamily on One Hundred-and-twenty-third, as well as the large industrial development, which would be on the former gravel pit, Pierce County Gravel Pit on Forty-seventh Street. And then, North Lane, our North Thorn Lane sewer extension, as well as Dave briefly touched on, a new online permitting. We're working with Pierce County to join the Powell system, so hopefully, that will help to streamline permitting as well. And some other Horizon projects, just wanted to touch on the QFC property real quick. We do have a, a notice of complaint that will be going out on that property, either this week or next week. The roof is in terrible shape, and so, either they're, they're going to have to fix it or tear it down, so, did you have a comment?
Yeah, we've also had experiencing some significant deterioration of the site, along with all of a sudden, a homelessness population moving in with RVs. They're currently stealing electricity from off the QFC property. Police Department was out there today. We're also in, in meeting with the owner to get other RVs that have been abandoned off the site. So, this continues to be an issue. It's not being ignored, and I just wanted to let the council know that this is an important project. We know it, and we are working the issues.
And then, in terms of redevelopment on that site, we're, well, I've been working with a mixed-use developer, and then, there's two other offers on the property. One is for Billiards slash Community Center, and the other one would be a retail center. And just to let you know, since our last conversation about the 2018 update, we've been working with a number of mixed-use developers to try to encourage them to come to the downtown and be that first project. We are hopeful on the QFC property to get a good offer potentially this week on that, so, we continue to work on that piece.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that, Joe.
Yeah.
I appreciate that update, and that was one of my questions I was going to pose, is how have we been able to, or are we, trying to target market to fill spaces in the CBD? For example, mixed-use project, I know we brought that one developer potential in. We sat down, you provided them some really great materials as a follow-up. I don't know if they ever came back with questions, but that's the kind of thing I love to see more of, is if we can say, we know that X, Y, and Z developers have done some really good projects in the South Sound, they need to come take a look at what we have, and invite them in, say, love to have you come on down, we'll do the full, you know, full dog and pony, provide them the information, the site, opportunities, incentives that we have, and then just kind of follow up with them. I think sometimes it takes that attentionality a little bit more, and it sounds like you're doing some of that.
Exactly. So, we've kind of, since our conversation before, we've focused on trying to find the mixed-use developers. That's kind of been our priority.
Yeah.
Just because that, you know, some of the retail, as you can see, some of the projects that we have now, still the restaurants, Dutch Brothers Office, Jamba Juice, Ulta coming in to backfill the...
Is that going to happen?
Yes, yes.
All these are going to happen eventually?
Well, there's no guarantee, but we, we think that there's a very good chance that they'll all happen. And, and so, as I was saying, we have met with other mixed-use developers other than Rush, which we have talked to, and there has been additional follow-up with each of those. There's been a conversation with a micro-apartment builder, so that's not necessarily in the CBD, but potentially around the transit station. And it, it seems to be attractive also for service members as an option, because many of them obviously live off-base.
So, on the QFC, we've got C parcel and D parcel left. I call the D parcel the Bagel Parcel. Has there been interest in that one as much as there's been in the QFC parcel?
And...
When I say the Bagel Parcel, I'm talking about where the Cascade Bagel building is at one point, whatever acre parcel?
Well, it's...
That immediately abuts the Colonial Center project.
Well, the person that we spoke to most recently, the desire was for that individual to acquire the whole thing.
Both parcels that are left, okay.
Yes, and we've been told through the grapevine that at this point in time, the owners of QFC have, have indicated that they would be willing to sell the property for three-point-five million in cash.
Good.
Which is a very good price. And so, I know that they are working behind the scenes, seeing if they can find a proper, appropriate developer. We have spoken with a contractor, civil engineer here locally, who's brought us in here to take a look at this. We continue to work it. We're also proposing some things to make the QFC owner of the property more willing to get rid of it rather than hold on to it.
Which is the reason for the notice, to be honest.
There's also some other things in way, but yes.
Yeah.
The notice of complaint, and that's one of the reasons he doesn't want to do anything to the building, he's trying to sell it. But at the same time, we need to make sure that we keep pressure on this so that something happens, but also, keep it in, in line with what the code says.
Right.
And so, it's sort of balancing this, but I, I definitely understand the council's goals, and we're trying to get there.
Got it. So, the, the guy that's working with Landon, it sounds like you might be looking at both parcels?
My understanding is, that's, that was the deal, because we were talking about mixed-use property.
Right.
Which means you'd have to require both to make it work efficiently.
Okay, as I say, that's a lot of acreage for, depends on the size and the parking you need, but...
Well, the other part, you know, we did talk about there being a need to see a dedication for additional public park space out front where all the oak trees are. And then, in addition, acquisition of that property for both parcels, and then, a mixed-use, and then create a whole series of public streets.
Yeah.
Because the public streets actually increase the value of the property, because now you have more retail space or office space on the first floor. So, so, they're all in agreement, that's sort of the plan that we were looking at, but we are still waiting for someone to close the deal.
You've got that frontage, as you know, on the Colonial Plaza, that if they do a mixed-use, it'd be great to kind of ensure that the design has some pedestrian-friendly retail on that frontage, yeah.
Yeah, that's the other part that we spoke about, the fact that the city's putting over two-million dollars into a new road project next door. The city's serious about trying to do something to this area.
Okay, good, well, that's hopeful.
Okay, and then, just to touch on the opportunity zones, I, I believe you know what that is, and it's deferral of capital gains tax to 2026 and appreciation on the property. If someone were to invest in a property, real property project, then there would be no capital gains on appreciation of that property in that time period. And we have been working with someone who is well-versed in that to help us at no cost, and so, they're just helping different communities in Pierce County with that project.
You know, that same topic, I know that there are other individuals looking at the opportunities and zones in Lakewood for a variety of things, we just don't know about it. And I find out about it through word of mouth from time to time, but there is someone out of the Bellevue area looking at acquiring a significant amount of land in the opportunity zone in the vicinity of Bridgeport Way and Pack Highway, so, we'll see what happens. If that does move forward, that would be great news, because that means they will do some investment, I'm confident.
Do you know what the status of the federal regulations is?
I haven't looked at them yet, but there was, new regulations just came out, I think it was this week, or, sorry, last week. I just got information...
Is it publishing the proposed regulations?
Yeah, I just, I got an email on that Friday, I believe, but I haven't looked at it yet.
I know a lot of people were waiting on that to get better guidance, so...
Yeah. Okay. And then, Kendrick Street, I just wanted to mention, Mr. Borman is continuing to assemble property and purchase more properties, eventually to do up to a ten-acre redevelopment. They will be doing a smaller project of, I believe, sixteen units, multifamily here, hopefully this year. And then, we just touched on a little bit on the downtown plan projects. And then, another Horizon project, which we've been working on for a few years now, and I just wanted to kind of show you some visuals. We have, did do, went through a conceptualization of what it could look like. Going into the property, this is one example, we're looking from Pack Highway as we enter the property, and then, the other side, of course, is I-5. And then, there's a link to all of the outreach files. We've begun talking to all of the property owners, and so far, it's been very positive. All of them, we're looking at kind of a phased approach, so, Wash Dot, which we now finally have an agreement with them to market their property, and all of the budding properties around that, which equals about eighteen acres. So, it could be a significant redevelopment project, and all of those owners are interested in potentially participating in that redevelopment, so we're encouraged by that. And then, just a few more images to show you what it could potentially look like, conceptually...
I like it.
Water, a water feature.
Nice touch.
And, and then, from the top, looking from I-5, another example, and then, along Pack Highway, of course, to your right, I-5 to your left. And, and then, at the end, close to the rail, there's a, a stormwater pond, so, we're thinking that would be nice for a little park area, potentially. And then, finally, I just wanted to give you a snapshot of quarter one permitting. Permitting was slow, but that's pretty typical of, of first quarter, and, and with all the projects coming up, we feel that it, it should be another good year for us. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
Exciting.
Thanks for the update. Did you see the movement?
Are you getting much feedback, input, leads from the EDB, Sarah Bonds and those guys?
We get all the, we do get all the leads from Sarah. I want to say, in the last month, I've probably gotten four or five.
Is that reasonably decent, or...
That's reasonably decent, and, you know, some of them, we don't have the property or what have you. It also goes to all the brokers, the Lakewood Industrial Park, and the major property owners, so everybody is in the loop on those, on those outreaches.
They're treating you right, though, hopefully?
Yes.
EDB?
Yes.
Okay.
We're also beginning to see some initial more interest in agentic development in Lakeview neighborhood, which is a new one. We'll see what happens.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we move to the Lakewood Imaging Campaign update with Ms. Newton and Ms. Grimley.
I am excited to be here this evening to provide you with...
After schools.
With an update on our imaging campaign. So, what we'll do is just run through kind of where we're at today, which is pretty much at the end of, of this work that's been done. So, just to kind of refresh everyone's memory of the scope of work, this is what was proposed to Hemisphere, which is the consultant marketing firm that we hired, and they were tasked with developing a strategic, strategic image and messaging campaign to promote the benefits of living and working in Lakewood. And we were really clear with them that we didn't want to do a branding. We wanted something that we could have deliverables, we wanted something that we could put out there and really market the city. So, we didn't need them to, you know, tell us how to change our logo, we didn't need them to give us a fritchy, a catchy little phrase. We really wanted something that we could have an emotional impact, kind of a call to action for individuals, which I think you're seeing a lot of lately, obviously, you know, the big companies, Apple, whatnot, they're very good at that. We don't need to be Apple, but we do need to be competitive in the marketplace, and we need to kind of take it to that next level. We've obviously had success in the past with our I Am Lakewood campaign, which we continue to use, and that's really honed in on the local pride that we have in Lakewood, but we also need to go beyond our borders and reach out into Pierce County and outside of Pierce County. And that means going above and beyond the I Am Lakewood imaging that we have. As it lists here, the project goals were to identify and promote the key values, identify and evaluate the audience's goals, and then, develop the key messages and the image strategy. And I think those last two ones were the most important, because you really need that path forward, how do you proceed? And that's what I'm really excited to begin implementation of, is, okay, this is, you know, this is what we're going to say, and this is where we're going to go, and that's where we're going to really hit, hit the folks. So, just a quick timeline, we started this back in end of August, early September, is when we had our stakeholder interviews and our focus group meetings. From there, they did the SWOT analysis and the brand positioning, they created personas who we're going to be targeting, they came up with a couple of brand anthems and taglines, which we'll see here shortly. And then, at our request, we asked them to bring them back to the stakeholders that they had talked to at the beginning, to get their feedback and find out from them what they, what they liked. And then, they made their recommendation to us based on those comments, and then, here we are this evening for our update, and then, going forward, would be moving forward with, with that messaging and, and the outline that they've provided as far as where we should be targeting to reach who we want to reach. So, on the stakeholder focus groups, there were seven one-on-one phone interviews that were done, and I know some of you were contacted, and they use the council's vision and goals and objectives as the foundation for the questions around that. And then, there are also four, four focus group meetings, where we had approximately twenty representatives from across the city. So, in addition to talking to city staff, we had representatives from the police department, we had Tom Knight from Joint Base Lewis McCord, we had West Pierce Fire and Rescue at the table. For education, we had both Denise Yokum and Joyce Love, or, sorry, yeah, Joyce Love Day, or, and then, Leanne Albrecht, who's the communications person for Clover Park School District. And then, we had Albert James as well, who's one of the members of our youth council, so we wanted to have that youth voice on there. And so, we represented kind of the whole spectrum. And then, from our business community, we had a really good showing there. We had Casey Ingles from Tactical Taylor, we had Linda Smith from the Chamber, James Guerrero, John Munn from Lakewood Playhouse, Timothy Johnson, and Tim Prier. So, we had a nice representation of, of folks who are active and who've been here, and also have a very good insight as to the business side of, of what's happening in the region and in Lakewood. So, based on those interviews, as well as just additional research and homework, so to say, that they did, they created the SWOT analysis, so the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and they looked at those under the categories of business, community, and education. And we won't go through all of them, but you can see, obviously, we love to see that the opportunities list is the longest, that really shows that we have a lot of things that we can highlight and showcase for our community that I think will really benefit us as we go forward with, with what they've proposed. So, from there, they created the value proposition, and we met with them kind of along the way, and so, initially, when we met with them, you know, they kind of were honing in on this American dream is more achievable in Lakewood, which I will admit, at first, I was like, oh, that's kind of cliche. I, you know, I, I came at it a little skeptical, but when you really look... But when you really look at it, it's true. I mean, we've got unique and affordable housing options, so, you know, we have everything from those who are looking to start their family and come in to start our neighborhoods, to those who are looking to settle down and retire, and to, you know, I've worked my whole life and I'm ready to have my lakefront home and, and live in this beautiful neighborhood. From a business standpoint, we have the room to scale up. As Becky's presentation just showed, we have a lot of home-based business, a lot of people that are starting up. So we have room to accommodate them, but then also for that growth to happen. We have the excellence in education. We've got the highest graduation rate of comparable districts. We also have, obviously, our, our colleges that are providing affordable, wonderful educational opportunities. And then, of course, we're family-friendly. In addition to, obviously, our parks and our neighborhoods, the city puts on a lot of wonderful, family-friendly events. We're very focused on, on that. So with this kind of in mind, they created the, the brand personas, and these are effectively who we will be targeting, who we're looking at. And it was nice to have them put a face and kind of a personality onto these folks, so they can be a little bit more identifiable than just demographics and statistics. So the four areas that they identified that, that we'll be targeting would be a starter. So this is someone who, you know, is a young, single, professional, middle-class parent, that idea, they're seeking to, you know, kind of pursue their American dreams, and maybe they're starting out. And it identifies ways in which we can target them, areas and where we can reach them, where are they getting their information. Roger the Builder represents kind of that entrepreneur, that person who's doing the startup. You know, they're wanting to, to make a life for themselves, and, you know, how we can help them, what we can do to, to make them realize that Lakewood is their place to come and locate. The long-termer, obviously, we have a number of folks who've been in our community for a long time, and, and we want to address them as well, because they're, they're who helped make Lakewood Lakewood. And they're also the ones that are going to probably be some of our first ambassadors. They want to share their love for their city, and we want to work with them to kind of tell their stories about why they've chosen Lakewood and, and what it is about the city that, that makes them want to be here. And then, obviously, with our strong connection with Joint Base Lewis McCord and the military, you know, there's, there's a lot of individuals, as we know, are transitioning out of the military, and they're looking to stay, and the Northwest is a place that they want to be, and Lakewood is the city that they want to be in. And so how can we appeal to them and, and help them find the right home and, and the right job here in Lakewood? So when they were talking to us about how we want to advertise ourselves, if you will, they talked a lot about the tone and the style, and so they recommend for us to have an authentic tone of voice, but also to be fun, fearless, and friendly. So, you know, people want to be talked to, they want to be, you want to relate to them, and that's kind of what they're saying with this. And then visually, when we look at how we're going to represent the city with images, you know, put the lake back in Lakewood. Let's showcase the beauty that we all know is here, but, you know, folks who have not been to Lakewood may not realize that. So we need to really play up that beauty. Obviously, own our diversity. We're proud of our diversity, and we need to start showcasing that and, and putting that out there. And then just the celebration of our, our neighborhoods and our districts. So they actually presented to us two taglines and anthems, and I think both of them really showcased Lakewood well, but one of them was the clear winner for our stakeholders when we went back to them with the presentation, and ultimately won out overwhelmingly, because a lot of people felt that it was a strong call to action, and it really resonated with them. So the one that was the clear favorite among everybody was Build Your Better Here. And I'll go ahead and read the anthem that goes with it, that this will be what we can use for advertising in different pieces, so we can break it up, we can use sections of it, we can use the larger piece of it as well. So there's a lot of options for how to present it. So I'll do my best to read this slowly, so that you can really feel the. Well, I'm not a singer, but, and I will say, Paul, who's the, the person that we were working with, he's just, he wrote this, and he did a wonderful job, but he also has like the perfect voice for reading it. So I should have like recorded him and played him reading it, but here we go. So, "Better is neighborhood after tree-lined neighborhood filled with unique, affordable homes just waiting for your personal touch. Better is a house on the lake. You pick the lake. There are five. Better is an early morning row, a lunchtime run, or an afternoon with the family in one of our picturesque parks. Better is an international district that packs more flavor into a few square miles than almost anywhere in Washington. Better is a diverse school district with one of the best graduation rates in the South Sound and two of the top-ranked high schools in the state. Better still is a partnership with local, award-winning community colleges, ensuring that our district prepares students for the promising careers of tomorrow. Better is a community protected by some of the most overqualified first responders in the country. Better is an economy fueled by the fourth-largest military base in the world and a business climate built to bulldoze barriers and incentivize investment. Better is a downtown poised to become a walkable, shoppable, livable, dinable playground. Whether you want to build higher, scale up distribution, or get in on the ground floor of the South Sound's next dynamic live-work-play destination, we've got the opportunities to help you compete. Turns out Lakewood has better covered. The question is, will you build your better here?" So there's that one, which is obviously a very positive call to action, and if you remember back to the brand personas, it really hits all four of those, and it can be relatable to them based on whatever it is that they want to be building for themselves, whatever their better is. And that was some of the feedback that we received from the stakeholder group. A couple of the individuals said that they really liked that it's open for interpretation, so it's open for whatever you can identify with, with this. So the next one that they recommended for limited and specific use is Where History Meets Opportunity. So I'll read that one. "In Lakewood, history runs deep. Here, the Nisqually people fished and traded. Here, generals and presidents kept camp. And here, soldiers trained to stem the tide of tyranny around the world. But we're more than our past, the periods of pain, and the good old days alike. We honor our past, but embrace a full, a future full of opportunity. A future in which our already award-winning schools and community colleges become the pride of our city. A future in which our first responders receive the recognition they deserve for making Lakewood safe and secure. A future, a future in which Lakewood is known for its beautiful parks and lakes, our established tree-lined neighborhoods, our unique and affordable housing, and our reemerging downtown. A future that releases entrepreneurs to build something special in a business climate that removes barriers to success and creates incentives for investment. A future in which servicemen and women at the fourth-largest military base in the world choose Lakewood, not just as a temporary home, but as their forever home. We are a Lakewood emboldened to build, to beautify, and to celebrate the opportunities provided by this place we call home. So welcome to Lakewood, where history meets opportunity." So this one obviously is a little bit of a different message, and one of the comments that was made by our stakeholders was that while they liked it, they were worried about people's perception on Lakewood's history, because it's really a personal identification, and so someone may not have necessarily a good history with the city. And so they were worried about playing that up. In addition, just keeping in mind, too, that unfortunately, there is still that reputation out there about cops, and so when people think of the city's history and their reputation, those that don't know the city and that aren't in the city day-to-day, that's what they're going to think of, or they might think of Western State, or, you know, some of those things that we're trying to, you know, frankly, say were a lot more than that. So those were some of the, the feedback items that, that people had on that.
Also, you're going to tick off two tribes by mentioning one.
Pardon me?
Also, you're kind of going to, you're going to potentially offend two tribes by only mentioning one, instead of saying Native Americans and leaving it open.
That's a good point, yeah. So one of the, the brand anthem, you know, kind of explaining what it is, is basically is, as we've already talked about, a message that conveys the flavor, culture, and promise of the Lakewood community in a compelling, emotional, stirring way. And I wanted to just read really quickly, one of the people who attended the stakeholder meeting actually followed up with our consultants with an email, and he wrote, "As soon as I got back to my car, I kept thinking about Build Your Better Here and just felt this immense sense of pride about Lakewood and what my better could be in the future. Throughout the day, I mixed up some of the words of the tagline, but kept referring to my notes for the correct line, because I was so intrigued by what it meant to me and what it represents about Lakewood." So I thought that was cool, that it was something that stuck with him, and he said he was, you know, very excited to be a part of helping get it off the ground. So I thought that was cool, that he took the time to, to share that. So just some suggested uses for how we would make that anthem work for us. Obviously, the print ads, you can pull out phrases to use in headlines or body copy, same with webpages. So one thing that they recommend doing is having like a landing page, if you will, that would be focused around this campaign that we could direct people to, and it would have the available resources, which obviously with our new website is something that's very easy to do. And then also creating a video and using the full brand, brand anthem, anthem, excuse me, so having the voiceover, having that kind of strong voice that's going to read it in a way that, you know, gives you the goosebumps and has all the beautiful imagery to go with it. And that can be used, obviously, it's evergreen content, so it can be used on social media, it can be used on your website, kind of wherever you want to put it. So I'm going to play an example of this. This is one that they gave to us, so we're going to have a video. It's from Chrysler, and you may remember this from the 2011 Super Bowl, but Chrysler wanted to rebrand themselves as a luxury brand, and this kind of combines both Detroit and Chrysler. It's a lot more intense than what we would be doing, but just think about the, the imagery that you're going to have, that you're going to be seeing. So look at the pictures that they're using, the voiceover, the music, and just kind of the sense, the feelings that you get when you watch this, so.
I got a question for you. What does this city know about luxury? What does a town that's been to hell and back know about the finer things in life? Well, I'll tell you, more than most. You see, it's the hottest fires that make the hardest steel. Add hard work and conviction, and the know-how that runs generations deep in every last one of us. That's who we are. That's our story. Now, it's probably not the one you've been reading in papers, the one being written by folks who've never even been here, don't know what we're capable of. Because when it comes to luxury, it's as much about where it's from as who it's for. Now, we're from America, but this isn't New York City, or the windy city, or Sin City, and we're certainly no one's Emerald City.
So you can see kind of the, the power in that, and obviously, their suggestion is we would be a little more upbeat and, and not, you know, necessarily that intense, but at the same time, have that no apologies approach, you know? We are who we are, we're proud of who we are, and you know what? You don't know Lakewood. This is Lakewood. Let's show you what Lakewood really is. Kind of that, that mindset. And, you know, I think the imagery in that, the, the anthem that they used was very powerful, and it shows you how successful something like that can be. And then just going forward, this is what they've proposed for the next couple of years as far as, you know, where to start targeting and reaching people. So for 19, they've recommended Facebook, you know, you're hitting your long-termers, we're hitting our local residents, our, our folks that we're hopefully going to be able to bring on and, and have be our ambassadors and, and share our message. Instagram is where we're going to find our starters, the, the younger individuals that are going to come in, LinkedIn for the builders. And then Alaska Airlines, we've got three ads already scheduled to run this year in the Beyond Magazine. We've got one that'll be appearing in May, and then one in June, which are their Visit Washington focus, so we'll be in that. And then third one, which will be in November, which is obviously one of our busier travel times around the holidays, so that would be, you know, it's a nice time to get in front of them. And then suggested channels for 2020, they recommended Zillow, which obviously, from the housing market side, that's a great place to get our, our message out. Google Ads, which means we'll be appearing in, in searches, and then YouTube, so obviously videos like that, something like that. And then South Sound Business Magazine to target that, the business side. And then the recommended next steps are, you know, really rolling out the new brand message and beginning to create that synergy and that energy around it, working with some of those long-termers. Obviously, you know, I, I would recommend going back to some of our stakeholders who are at our meetings, who are really excited about this, and seeing if we can find partnerships and ways to work with them to help communicate. And then obviously focusing on the Lakewood housing and, and where we can start to really push that to the starters, and beginning the outreach to the builders, and then longer term, you know, just continuing to fine-tune it, intensify it, and really just keep pushing that message forward.
And we can do a video or have them create one that we can push out on these media?
That, I mean, that would be the recommendation, and we need to speak with them about kind of that final phase there. The Hemisphere, so they have the ability to do that. The scope of this contract was just to present this, and then we said, you know, going forward, we would decide, you know, what that looks like. So I think it would be great to bring them on, because they obviously have been, they're the ones that created this, and they create good products. So that would be looking at the next steps and, and the funding of that and, and getting that to go forward, because definitely something like this, you need to hire it professionally done. I mean, I can shoot video and I can edit, but I can't, I can't get Eminem, so.
They're coming to specialize in that.
Exactly. And that's what you want, and you want to hit, you want to be at that professional level. Yes, please do.
Mr. Simpson. This is really good. Very good. I remember when I first started on the city council, the mayor used to say, "Why not swing for the fences? You're pulling your punches." I want to see a video like I saw for Detroit, a city that I have been, a city that I lived by for a number of years in my life. So I, I would like us to swing for the fences on this. Secondly, if I make a suggestion, stop talking about the education in the city. Cities run on economics, and that's what that video was showing you. We don't have a good educational system in the city, so don't talk about it. We're ranked 68th in the state. How do I know this? Because my wife and I look at retirement properties around the state, and the first thing we look at is where the school districts are. It didn't take much to figure out, well, why don't we look at Lakewood? Let's look at Clover Park. So I would leave that out. And third, and this is a very minor point, but I caught it. If you're going to rebuild a city like Detroit and make that, that sort of, like I say, that, that no apology approach, like usually the way I am, don't talk about social justice. That's nonsense. It is the antithesis to what you're trying to do here. Those are my suggestions. Bren, this is, this has been a very, very good presentation. I really thank you for the work you and Becky and others have put into this, because this is, this is good, and thank you to the stakeholders who contributed to this. Thanks.
I really like the, the tagline. I think the tagline's great. I think the content's really good. I think you've got two elevator speeches in the content. I think the, the difficulty is going to bring, be bringing that down to 15, 22nd byte. It's something bigger than the tagline, but doesn't go in, into depth into two elevator speeches. I would note, I just looked up very quickly, Chrysler sales have tanked, so I would be more concerned with results than the art. And also note that one thing that might be overlooked by a professional in the industry... uh, is that some of our markets are in Fayetteville, North Carolina, Fort Hood in Texas, San Antonio, Fort Polk in Louisiana. Because, uh, that dispelling the, uh, cops image starts with, uh, disseminating a, a more up-to-date, uh, set of information than folks there who are migrating in have. Because they decide not to live in Lakewood before they get here based on
Right.
Some of that historic. So we have to reach out to them, not putting it on, on, uh, a, a targeted, uh, Facebook ad that reaches the South Sound or on cable TV here or something isn't gonna reach people transitioning in. So just some thoughts, but I like the concept.
Ms. Whalen.
I, I really love the concept. Kind of the, a- as you know, the, the, the big picture image artsy guy on this stuff. A couple of things I would suggest we do. I, I agree focusing a lot on imagery, cuz we have, I mean, that's really our plus. And I've seen, there's a couple of people have done some great drone videos over the lakes, and the views are unbelievable when you get up that high and they do the zoning in. Greg, Greg Horn did one over Lake Stilcom, and there's some others. I mean, it's amazing to do that. Uh, I would include, uh, along with imagery, some stats that come in, similar to what the county did with their JBLM impact video. That was very impactful to me to see the data through the imagery, uh, with that video. Mm-hmm. It's pretty well done, and I certainly would wanna include the impact of JBLM. With regard to imagery, th- there's some opportunities come up that I'd wanna sure, be sure that we sequence in, so when the Colonial Pro- Plaza is done, you know, we can have a picture of the old with the new. Build your better here, right? Uh, Summerfest, you got incredible forty-some odd thousand people. You could show, you know, from, again, an overhead drone picture, the thousands of people swarming into Stilcom, or Forest Stilcom Park. Uh, you know, the blank space where the pavilion was, and then a shot where there's hundreds of people for the first concert, the summer concert series. So some really cool shots we could do. And on the, to, to address, um, Mr. Simpson's comment on the workforce piece, uh, you know, I would probably be inclined to put in information about at least Culver Park Tech and Pierce College on the EDB side and going out and, and meeting with companies. The staff report we're getting back is the number one question is how is your workforce? And we, we tend to get that over and over and over and over and over again. So I think it's okay to trumpet the fact that we've got the number four, you know, community college in the nation, whatever the stat was for that, that Pierce College recently got. Culver Park Technical College is doing some amazing stuff, especially shots of their new pavilion, or their new, um, building infrastructure. So I think there's lots of great things to.
And transitioning, highly trained transitioning service members. If those could all go together in a pod, telling employers, we've got a workforce for you.
Yeah, we're building your better here and just all the new stuff we've got going on all over the place. So I think it's very positive if they get the right imagery. And I think it would be, I think it'd be helpful to have them do some drafts and let us see it, and as well as the stakeholders before we put a final on it. Not that we're the be-all and-end-all, but we've got some pretty good collective ideas of what looks good.
What are we gonna use for music? I'm thinking Van Halen.
There you go, yeah.
I'm dating myself.
We'll have to get back to you on that. I don't know if we have the money to pay for the license to do that. Does anyone know any, uh?
Oh, I've had this talk with the city attorney. Cause one city council meeting, I was gonna do, uh, Keep Your Hands Off Of Me by the Georgia Satellites, and I believe Ms. Walker told me I had to watch my step.
We won't be playing any Boston, let's just say that.
That'd be number two after Led Zeppelin.
Yeah. And no Sam Cooke working on the chain gang, so. It's got a catchy beat, but I don't think it's gonna work. Any questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Great ideas.
Great, thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Zar- Chief Zarro. First quarter police report, although you could do shout. The same, the same code.
All right, thank you, Mayor Anderson and council members. Uh, it's that time, uh, for the first quarter report from the police department. Uh, a couple of interesting things that, uh, we realized as we put the, the report together and some, uh, some new, um, ways of kind of looking at district stats too that are, um, I guess kind of excited to show you. So, uh, again, the first, um, quarter, some of the calls for service, everything is really down when you compare it to the fourth quarter. Uh, the total calls for service, arrests, um, other than warrant arrests, which are up, but those are fairly inconsequential. And again, the districts, uh, going from bottom to top, one through six. And, uh, as we look at the district activity, one of the things with this report, I tried to condense some of that, uh, into one visual, just to show you sort of where our activity is. And if you look at, uh, so the, I don't know if I'd call that orange or brown on top, but the darker of the two sections for each district show self-initiated activity, and then the yellow is the dispatched. And as you can see with the, the yellow, um, what we're getting dispatched to primarily are domestics, and that's with every district. Um, it's domestic violence are at least in the top three, if not the top one in every district. And then the others are unwanted persons, which a lot of times can end up being domestics as well. But, um, generally, unwanted persons and suspicious persons or vehicles, you can kinda say those are the same thing. And it's just somebody sees something suspicious and they call 911. District four, correct. Yeah, a lot of that is, um, uh, can be related to transients or just suspicious people. And this is something we did for the first time. I kinda wanted to, to look at, um, you know, our persons crimes, property crimes, and society crimes by district, not just, like, this, this slide shows just the general activity and the dispatched calls. These are actually the, the types of crimes that were reported by district. The red line there, it's the same in each one, and that's how the population breaks down as a percent of the entire, uh, population for the city. So as you can see, uh, obviously districts five and six have the most population. Those are the most, um, residential, uh, districts, particularly five. Um, and working from, uh, person crimes on the left, the top left there, persons, property, and society crimes, um, nothing real surprising. You can see that, uh, property crimes in district four are, you know, vastly outnumber the other districts. Well, district four is our, um, business center. It's what, uh, where we see, you know, most of our thefts. One of the, the most positive things I take from all of these slides is that where people live, um, is where they're the, the freest of crime, uh, and essentially the safest. If there's any place you should feel safest and should be freest of crime, it's where you live. And that's where we see districts five and six have the, um, so the, especially district five, which is almost exclusively, uh, residential, has the fewest property crimes.
So I, I kinda look at our police districts like the Middle East, and one day Colonial Power, how, Colonial Powers sit down, and they have a map, and they start drawing lines. And so you've got a bunch of countries that don't really relate to each other, it's just artificial lines on the ground. Has there been any thought to looking at where there are breaks in the geography that relate to commercial areas, crime concentrations, freeway exits, which side of the freeway you're on, what, whatever it is? So that we're, we're concentrating on where crimes occur, and then you measure that as opposed to what you just said, well, maybe, you know, the residential area. For example, I live in a low-time residential area that's in, you know, number one, but we're right across the street from both number, uh, four and number five. I, I've been in three congressional districts in the same house. So it's the same kinda thing. So the, the, the fact that I'm there doesn't relate to Stilcom and Woodbrook at all. It relates to four and five as far as crime prevention, measuring crimes, et cetera. Is there any different way that we could?
There, uh, each district for the entire city is also broken down by census block. Um, and each district has a certain number of census districts within it, uh, or census blocks within it. We could certainly break it down by that, um, which is, um, it's, it's, it will get more refined. Each census block is obviously smaller. So we could take a look at that. The, um, these are in some, you know, maybe a little bit arbitrary, uh, and they've been the same districts forever. And that's one of the things that we're able to do, is compare the same arbitrary lines over time. You know, they've, they've been the same.
Once you mentioned, when you said, oh, well, people are safe where they live, if there's a way to better represent that to the public, not even to redesign the districts for patrol reasons or anything else, but to say, okay, our, our residential areas have an increase in property crimes. That's different, that getting your house broken into or ha- being car-prowled at home is a lot different than being car-prowled at the park and ride or having thefts occur in a big box.
Right.
That's what you're talking about. Uh, and how do we, I think if, we, there may be a way that we could better message to the public and consider how to allocate resources if we're looking at what kind of property crimes do we want to allocate resources to? To, to? If, 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 it's, do we, yeah, do we need to work on residential burglaries? I can't tell from necessarily whether, uh, that's the reason property crimes are going up or down without delving deeper and how do we be, how are we transparent to our folks? I guess that's, I was kinda thinking out loud, but it's, it's, the lines on the ground don't match the reality.
I, um, I think some of that comes down to how you, um, if you know what the districts are, how you interpret that data and then message it to the public. For, for me, because I know that district five is, uh, almost exclusively residential, um, I can, I can safely say that, and district six, that when we see numbers under property crimes where they're well below, you know, their, their proportionate population, I can say that that is where you are generally freer of, of crime.
Mr. Simpson.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're trying to say, Mr. Mayor, but.
Better than I said it, I'm sure.
No, I'm not so sure. I mean, I can, your, your, your point is very, very fine, but when I look at that, I think that's very transparent. It tells me exactly what one needs to know. And it's, it's clear that, okay, where we have more residences, single-family residences, it's very clear that you have a lower crime rate there than, say, where you don't. And I think from public safety perspective, using this serves us well. Now, on the subject of imaging, that image we wish to portray, what I could see there is perhaps a change in language as to how this is presented to the public. I'm not saying we obfuscate, this is good internally, this is good intel in order to understand where we need to work harder. But on the public scene, how we present that image could be far different than that and yet say the same thing.
Right, I would never, I don't, I, I wouldn't present this ever just to the general public without, or to anybody without an explanation to go with it. And our next slide, as you could see, this is, uh, um, we are down almost everywhere. The one exception, uh, I guess, somewhat notable exception is under simple assaults or misdemeanor assaults, um, where there was a, and this is over, um, first quarter last year. And this is, uh, um, there was a seventeen, uh, and a little over seventeen percent increase there. And I'll talk to where, uh, about where a significant portion of that came from here in just a couple of slides. But, um, outstanding, I think, results here, or, uh, from the first quarter. Um, and a couple of things I'm gonna touch on, one are simple assaults and the other are property crimes in general.
So it looks like motor vehicle theft is finally broken, because it was kinda up last year a little bit?
It was a little bit. Yeah, it's starting to come down some. Um, we really, you know, looking over time, we really seem to have hit a, like a watermark where, for motor vehicle theft. And I, I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, I did an analysis just kind of comparing what we have geographically to, like Gig Harbor and Bonnie Lake and Federalway. And when we look at, like, per population and the large parking lots, we actually have a lower rate, like, per thousand of motor vehicle thefts than some of these others, even, I think, boarding at the time, if you looked at, at where, you know, just their population and the number of thefts that they had. So person crimes by quarter, again, um, up, uh, from not just first quarter last year, but fourth quarter of 2018. And up by about, if you look at inst- incidents, um, about forty-three. Now, um, you know, for a while I was presenting this every quarter, the, the Western State Hospital stats, and then it sort of plateaued at a very low point, and I was, I had pulled it off. But, um, when I saw the simple assaults, I, and the increase, I asked our investigators where we're seeing those, and the investigator that's assigned to Western State Hospital said he is definitely seeing an increase. So I pulled the numbers, and sure enough, if you look from fourth quarter till, um, of eighteen till first quarter of nineteen, it's an increase by twelve. And if you look at first quarter of last year compared to first quarter of this year, it's, what, tripled? So, um, and I shared this with, uh, the CEO out at Western State Hospital. Uh, I think last week I sent this to him and said I was gonna be presenting this here. Um, I didn't get any feedback back, so. Yeah, yeah. So again, we are seeing a significant amount of our persons crime coming from that one or, uh, institution, which. Well, if it's, if they're simple assaults or misdemeanor assaults, so it's nothing too serious, but, um, I think it's, there's just a, I don't know, a variety of, of factors that might lead to, cause this increase, but, um, an increase nonetheless. Now, here's one that, uh, I was actually excited about when I saw it. Um, so this is property crimes for the first quarter. Now, I think you remember me talking, talking about our, uh, retail theft emphasis and how I was looking forward to seeing what the impact was in the first quarter. I, I'm guessing there's probably more, uh, that contributed to this decrease in the retail theft emphasis, but I also think that had to play a significant part. There, that's the only thing that we've done different, um, from years past. And it's, uh, as you can see, uh, like, about a twenty-three percent decrease from, uh, the fourth quarter of, uh, 2018. And I talked to our crime analysts, our property crimes folks, and one of the things that they, when I talked about this, one of the things they warned me about, um, and Deputy Mayor Whalen, this probably be of significant interest to your friends in District Four, is for the next quarter, we may see a sharp inc- or not a sharp increase, but an increase from here, um, because they are doing, um, a more thorough job of reporting, uh, formally reporting all incidents of graffiti. And one of the reasons for that is so we can tie different, um, different taggings and, and graffiti incidents together. Uh, and one example is the, the DOAF, D-O-A-F. And one example is the DOAF, D-O-A-F, I don't know if you saw those around much. Sean Noble actually identified who that was and made an arrest. And he was able to do that from just documenting all, putting all these reports together, yeah.
Who is the DOAF?
I don't, he's actually a guy in his early twenties, nobody real productive, obviously. Yeah.
Supply some paint.
You might actually look at him and go, DOAF, you know, if you saw him in person. So it's sort of a fitting tag.
This guy would put in shackles and orange and have to scrub through the city?
Well, he's, I don't suspect he's super creative, so if we see DOAF around again, we'll know who it is, so.
What do we do though to these guys?
We arrest them and, and charge them with vandalism and do multiple counts. And a lot of times, it's just being, just contacting them and getting your hands on them and letting them know that they've been caught, and that's, that's enough.
It's a misdemeanor.
It is a misdemeanor. What's that?
Make an example of them. Why can't we ask?
Well, I mean, there can be, there can be, and that's all up to the courts. But typically, the, I mean, it's not somebody that has the money for restitution.
Well, I think that they can get out on their hands and knees and scrub the...
Oh, we have work crew, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to get these guys out there. I'm a graffiti DOAF. We can paint on the back of their orange outfit.
There you go.
And put their butt out there.
Yeah.
With scrubbing tools.
This is a rewrite of the Prince by Matt Kelly. Listening to over here.
They don't fit the chase of this. Yeah, I, I'd love to see some of that. And the more we had some of those DOAFs up and down in Gravely Lake on their hands and knees scrubbing stuff, the more likely than their other idiot DOAF friends would not do that stuff.
Correct. So word, just like property crimes here, word gets around because it's the same small group of people doing it. The more we focus on them and target them and, and get our hands on them, the more impact it will have in the long run.
I hope so. I mean, it'd be a lot better than capital punishment, which I've advocated, but...
And then...
His electoral...
Shoot inside order. So moving to crimes against society, again, this is things like drugs, drug arrests and prostitution, this were fairly flat for the quarter. One thing that's coming up for the, the next quarter's report that I'll just mention now is we did do a, an emphasis, actually a couple of months long, on deja vu, where there was some drug arrests, some prostitution arrests made, and we're evaluating it for revocation of their business license. So we'll see how that turns out. And then total crime, obviously down significantly, in a large part because of the property crimes And accidents by quarter, interesting that, that they're this low, and when you think about the, the weather that we had in the first quarter, initially, you might think, well, we had all the snow and the bad roads, that it might lead to more collisions. But what I think is it led to more people just staying home and staying off the roads. And if you get in a, in a collision when there's, you know, piles of snow everywhere, you just run into a snowbank and, you know, nobody reports it. So now, I want to get into a little bit of a discussion about adult family homes. As you could see, I presented this last time, these are our top forty adult family homes. It says forty of ninety-four, there's actually a hundred now. And I know that because I met with this unit with DSHS, who now has an office in our industrial park, that are sort of the regulatory arm of adult family homes. Not Adult Protective Services, but a different entity that works on regulating the homes. When I went and met with them just to find out exactly what they do and what they can do for us, that's when they said, oh, as of today, we're at a hundred. So that it changes frequently. But as you can see, there's one that accounted for eleven calls for service in, in three months. And most of them, and that goes for all of these, most of those calls are medical aid calls. Much fewer are for, for police.
You know, it's interesting because these guys are at a max of six adults per home, correct?
Right.
Now the legislature's changed in that bill. It moved to eight.
That's right. It might die.
Am I dying?
One of, in this, something I heard today, I got, actually got a phone call from a staff member at Tacoma General Hospital thanking me for the efforts of our officers and helping them deal with somebody that was sent there from an adult family home. The adult family home operator apparently called for an ambulance ride for this person to TG because what they said was a medical issue turned out to be some intestinal problems. And then they called the hospital and said, no, he can't come back here, we're kicking him out of the home. And this is within a day. It's not like a process that they went through. So the hospital said, you can't do that. So called us and our officers actually went out, and the person was discharged from TG. So the officers actually went out and this person was completely ill-equipped to handle the patients, and she was saying, I can't handle this person, so, so we're going to release him from the home. So the officers went around and opened the back door and said, here, this is your home, and explained to the operator that they can't just kick people out. These are, these are their residences. So that, we'll be contacting that unit that I met with about them tomorrow and see exactly what it is they can do for us. But those are, it's everything that we all sitting around here are aware of, that they're, they're being misused and the people that work there are ill-equipped to handle the people that are being placed there. Another thing that's, oh, I'm sorry.
I was wondering, a situation like that isn't an opportunity to get ahold of next of kin, if they have one, like a family member somewhere to say, place you put Uncle Joe is the best place for them.
Yeah, and that's something that, one of the things I want to do after talking to the TG staff today and learning about this incident, is just put together a more focused plan on how to deal with, with those types of calls and give it to, so our patrol staff knows, here's kind of a better protocol to follow if we do come across those things, instead of just Adult Protective Services or this unit with CPA or DSHS maybe calling the family members. One of the things, too, in the analysis, one of the bullet points talks about the name changes that we found in adult family homes. And Doug Strand, our crime analyst, as he was doing it, he found, I think he said, six new businesses and nineteen name changes of the adult family homes. No real reason that he could detect for that, and I mentioned it to that, the folks at that unit that I met with, and they didn't really have an explanation for it either, other than sometimes they get bought out or consolidated with another business. To me, it just seems shady, but that's something that, in order for us, if we're going to track activity at the adult family homes, we have to really pay attention to the addresses and not just the names and know that, you know, it can be the same house that changes names a couple of times. So moving on from adult family homes, there's a couple incidents here that obviously were notable in the first quarter, not the least of which was the officer-involved shooting in January, where a person called and said that, I can't remember the, and now I apologize, but he called and got officers to respond to his apartment, and as soon as they pulled up, he ran out at them with a knife. And all their actions and the deceased person's actions were confirmed by witnesses and officer statements and forensics and everything else. What, you know, in addition to the stress that normally comes with one of these incidents for our officers, this was also the first officer-involved shooting in our county after the passage of the new nine forty law. So our officers were definitely, had the additional stress of not knowing how that was going to impact them as well. As it turns out that, you know, the prosecutor still has not reviewed it, I think it's on the calendar to be reviewed, but they feel a little bit more comfortable just having seen, gone through it and seeing the process and having heard from Mary Robinette, that, you know, she doesn't seem to be one that's out to make a political statement with a prosecution of officers.
She's married to a cop.
What's that?
She's married to a cop.
I know, yeah. Now, one of the, another incident that I think couples well with that one, as we talk about some of the, the things that our officers do in dealing with people in crisis, was a call, and this one actually happened in Arrowhead, so it was just outside our city limits, but it was a person who was armed with a gun, and they were, officers were told, this person's suicidal and armed with a gun and walking around the neighborhood. They essentially sort of stalked this person around the neighborhood until they were able to, to get good verbal communication with him, get him to drop the gun, take him into custody and get him to the help that he needed. This is somebody that was armed with a loaded firearm and walking around, you know, threatening suicide, definitely in crisis in a residential neighborhood. He was safely taken into custody and gotten the help he needs, but again, not a headline getter because nothing happened. But these types of incidents happen all the time with our officers. I can't stress enough how often they very successfully and safely deal with people in crisis without anybody getting hurt and a lot of times armed people in crisis. A couple of other incidents that were mentioned there, they're just examples of very good police work. And then some discussion, some more discussion about the crimes against persons, the increase in simple assaults, and then the, the decrease in property crimes. And then finally, we talked a little bit about this a couple of months ago, just given the status of Metro SWAT and now Lakewood SRT having sort of a, a standing update on how that's going. And what I've included is the, the activity for Lakewood SRT in the first quarter. First, I did leave each of you a patch that the team made up. And if you look the, on there, the Latin phrase that's on there, roughly translates, it's the department's motto and roughly translated as we go in harm's way. The design was designed by one of our, our officers, Noah Dear, and in one corner of the branch that the Eagle is holding, you'll see MR. That's for Mark Renninger. He was the team leader of Metro SWAT in two thousand nine when he was killed and has always been sort of a foundational piece of this team, and they, that's how they chose to honor him. But you all played a, a significant hand in creating this department, or this, this unit, or this team. So I wanted to bring each of you your own little memento for that, so.
Where's CMR? Are they pleased with the way they've been fully developed here?
Well, I think this says a lot. It's just, just a patch, but they're, they're taking ownership and, and developing their own identity, and it didn't take long to do that. None of them, none of them left the, the team. We actually added, you know, the four people to the team, so it's, I think, it didn't take long for them to, to just stick with it and own it, and they're becoming their own self. As we look at the activity for SRT in the first quarter, four high-risk warrants. Again, the criteria for calling out the team is still the same, using the same risk matrix. And if there's, you know, it's a point threshold for either firearms possession or violent history, then the team is called to serve the warrants. The one near call-out for an active incident or barricaded suspect was the guy on I-5 that flipped the semi over and then barricaded himself in the car and charged officers with a sharp thing initially. I say near call-out because they were starting to, to get there on scene, some of them were already working, when the person gave up to patrol negotiators that were, that were there talking to him. And then three incidents where negotiators, or just negotiators were involved. One person who climbed a tree and refused to come down, he's a regular down in McCord Gate area, the Springbrook neighborhood. A suicidal female who was threatening to jump over the overpass, and then a mentally ill man who climbed the ham radio antenna right across from St. Clair Hospital and actually fell and died, and this was, yeah, this is just a little over a month ago. Yeah, to, to the top, yeah. And he had stayed up there all night, so his muscle activity, it was cold, so his muscles weren't responding, and he actually was trying to reach for the ladder to get down and slipped and fell. But our negotiators spent a good deal of time trying to talk to him and, and get him to come down on that. But something where, you know, they're, they're considered sort of an element of the team, but for something like that, only the negotiators are needed, so. And we've added several of those, which in addition to being a, a good resource for SRT is a fantastic resource just to have them out in patrol and have that expertise spread So, and there we have it. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Ms. Moss?
I don't have a question, just a comment. You know, it's really frightening when you walk into, like, I was walking into Aberson's Saturday, and there was this guy, and we had a basket of merchandise, and this lady walked by and just grabbed one out and started running. It is, the, the citizens in the area is just panicking because this guy pulls out something and it's his phone, and he's going to video her, but everybody was afraid of what's going to happen.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, there's nothing you can do because by the time you got there, they were out of sight anyway, you know? But it's scary.
Yeah. It is, yeah. You never know that, that shoplifter, you know, doesn't know how that person's going to react. He doesn't know, you know, this person's been stolen from a million times and he's not going to take it anymore and decides to pull out a gun.
Yeah, and you walk into that, you don't know what's going on.
Yeah.
So it's really a panicky topic.
It is, it is.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a thought. You've consistently stressed the good that our department does, and I see the emails. And you made a comment about, again, a good deed, you were talking about that list of good things that have been done. And the thought crossed my mind, is it worth contemplating a clip, you know, in this video of our mental health person who rides with a police officer as the good building our future for a safe Lakewood? Do you, I'm just, I'm just spitballing here. You think that might be something that could help project that positive image of Lakewood? Because other cities confront the same issues we do. But we're doing something, and there's a positive when you have a mental health professional get out with a police officer to talk with someone.
I agree that it is an out, that they are doing outstanding work, and it's a great program that we have that not every city does, and I think they're making a difference. And I've actually, I actually had this conversation with Bryn when we were first getting going on this concept. No matter what you say about police, no matter how positive, if you start to mention police and public safety, especially in a positive, in an imaging campaign, that gets people thinking about crime and policing. So my, as great a work as our officers and everybody does, if, from my perspective, if we, if we talk about that, then it detracts from people thinking about bringing their business here or buying their, you know, buying a first home here or, you know, retiring here. I just think it's, I, I like where you're coming from, but I just don't think that would contribute to what you're trying to do.
I understand.
Mr. Bulkey? How'd our mobile home parks do this last quarter?
Better. The, for the most part, they are much quieter than they were. Car One still is front and center for us, but we've also have a more structured approach to them as far as involving L and I with some of the electrical issues there for the entire park, not just trailer by trailer by trailer. So there, there actually has been some improvement there.
Mr. Whalen? Do you draw any connections at all with the positive work in the rental housing and safety program to those apartment complexes that have had calls for service?
That, that would be an interesting, that would be an interesting look. We haven't done that yet, but I think that'd be worth, worth looking at. It'd be easy to do because we know who's been involved in the program and we can easily look up calls for service.
Yeah, to actually get good data, but it'd be good to start tracking.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Any other questions for Chief?
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. You both did good work.
You realize, Chief, we save the best for last.
Well, I knew that. I knew that going in. So then it's, so then you're, you're done and going home then, right?
That's why the manager's...
Uh, no, yeah, I wouldn't go that far now.
Stay around for his report.
No.
Austin gets to stay around for his report. Austin gets to stay around for his report.
Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I got a few updates for you. First, for your next regular meeting, May 6th, we are hoping to have Mr. Denny Heck here, Congressman Heck, to be recognized by this body for some of the great work that, that he has done for us back in Washington DC. And you might recall, we had this conversation late last year and earlier this year. So it's just a matter of finding a hole in his schedule. And so I was talking to his team earlier this afternoon and they're hoping that Monday, May 6th may work. If not, certainly some other Monday here later, later this summer. But I wanted to let you know that we hadn't, we hadn't forgotten, hadn't forgotten that. You know, real quick on the legislative stuff, actually Deputy Mayor, I'd like to apologize. Actually, 1023 did pass, actually unanimously out of both the House and the Senate. However, we work with Senator O'Ban and he was able to get an amendment in there that creates some precedence because the amendment stipulates that the two new beds, seven and eight, if they go to that, cannot house somebody who has either a violent or sex offender background into that, that facility. So again, it's getting the proverbial nose under the tent, if you will, to create some precedent so we can get that in place across the board in the future.
So that amendment only impacts beds seven and eight?
That's, that's, that's my understanding.
So they can't have, they can have six sex offenders, but they can't have seven and an eight bed home?
That is correct, but again, in talking with Senator O'Ban, it's about getting something in place and we can work from there and we can, and we can build upon it. Though I would just like to point out to this body, 96-0 out of the House, 48-0 out of the Senate. You know, so.
Unbelievable. But on the other hand, they passed the other bills allowing from six to eight. Go figure.
Just saying.
Did you get any feedback on that? Why there was such an affirmative vote? Did Rayanne say anything about that? I mean, that's pretty amazing to me.
You know, we, we have an uphill battle, this should be clear, because even though people empathize with us, quite frankly, they realize the problem that these facilities have and they don't want them in their, they don't want them in their community. Let's just be clear on that. Can we just be, can we just put that, can we just agree to that?
Yeah.
Or they're buying off the mental health.
Or the, I guess our, our best line of defense may be to, to do everything we can to impede any change or improvement to western states so it closes down the jobs and the money go with it, we'll be better off.
Well, we're not going to do that, Mayor. We are going to abide by the process and just like anybody else, we are going to make sure that they cross every T and dot every I.
Death by a thousand cuts?
No, we are going to follow the process.
Yeah, thank you.
Got the city attorney leaning over me. Anyways, the legislative stuff, you know, right now, the big question is whether or not they're going to get out on time, which is next Sunday. This week, the, the House and the Senate leadership, not all the legislators, will come together to finalize the budget. And so hopefully our money request, community policing, funding and support of Springbrook and Fort Silicon Park will be in there in some shape, form or manner. So that's where our focus is right now. It could go a little longer into May, but at this point in time, I know the legislators, they want it to be done and they want it to be done on Sunday. We should know by Thursday or Friday of this week, the status of our specific money requests. So as soon as that becomes available, of course, we will share that with you. I haven't driven it this afternoon, but we closed down the section of Gravel Lake Drive to do grinding and overlay. And so, matter of fact, I know at mid-afternoon, they were almost done. So, so that's, that's some good news. And then later, probably next week sometime, they're going to shut down in the evening and, and do the striping when there's hardly anything going on. We did hear from one of the neighbors this morning that the contractor had his team out there at 04:30 with a leaf blower cleaning off the sidewalks. And so we learned about that about, you know, 6:30, 7 o'clock this morning and we were clear with the contractor. No, we said 07 to 9 PM. We did not say 04:30. And so we had, how shall we say, Mr. Bucic had a conversation with the contractor.
They were definitely out there at 5:45 because I drove.
No, they were out there at 4:30.
Yeah.
Yeah, and what they were doing is they were blowing everything off the sidewalk because then they need to bring in the street sweeper to, you know, clean up the street and do all that. But they were not supposed to start that work until 07. Now, the good news on the other end is they finished up earlier this afternoon as opposed to continuing it to, quite frankly, the rush hour and such. A couple of weeks ago, the Sound Transit got together what they're calling the South Sound, the Sounder South Sound Corridor Leadership Forum. And Lakewood had been invited to that. Actually, the mayor and I had been invited. I, I wasn't able to make it and neither was the mayor because of other competing priorities. Long story, long story short, it's a group that's representative of South King County all the way into Pierce County to look at as the extension of the Sounder continues into Lakewood, into DuPont, and, and, well, yeah, into DuPont. So just so that we continue to have a seat on the board, I have assigned Tiffany Spear to be our representative on this group so that we have somebody who can regularly attend and we can have some feedback and input into that. I think I might have mentioned to you Waste Connections has approached the city requesting a surcharge be applied to their recycling rate and the reason being is because they're losing, they say they're losing market share because of changes overseas. Our response to that has been first and foremost, okay, provide us a proposal. They have not done that yet, other than having conversations, so we are waiting on that proposal. We've also pointed out to them that the current franchise agreement, Section 3.3.3, is very, very specific and that all risk associated with both yard waste and recycling lies with the contractor. And so they've been gaining, you know, the upside on that for a number of years. And now all of a sudden, as a publicly traded company, they want Lakewood residents to subsidize them. So again, my advice and/or direction to them was if you want this body to consider something, put something in writing. They are tentatively scheduled to come before you as part of your study session on May 13th and I can see four of you are ready to jump in on this, but I'm just giving you a warning order on that.
So if they, if they want to do that, I, I would, I would be willing to give them the time if they want to talk about going to a rate-making type system, which is what they're, they, they did not advocate and did not agree to, that we go back to the beginning of the agreement and we get all the financials and we see how much money they've made. Because if we're going to go to a rate-making, if they want to propose going to a rate-making system for one incident, we have to consider the universe of the franchise, not one year.
That conversation is clear.
Look, Mr. Bulkey?
I was, I was fortunate to get home from work and while I was preparing to come here, I actually turned on the news, the evening news. And there was, and they were in Florida talking about this exact same thing. And it was waste management, which is similar to waste, which is even larger. And they said that even though they were losing money on the recycling now because they can't get rid of the stuff, they actually still had record profits because they also own the dumps. So now all the stuff that isn't recycled goes to the dump, they charge a tipping fee at the dump and so they were actually making more than they were when they were recycling the stuff. So there's, I get that they, they want us to talk about this story, but there's stories. It's the same, it's the same thing here. They, they get the, they get the tipping fee.
Can I add anything to the story, sir?
And, and, and one of the thing, yeah, and, and not our, not our company, but, but another company, when I was in a dispute with them up in King County, was playing fast and loose with the tickets. And so they were tipping in, there was a recycling rate and a, and a, and a MSW, solid waste rate, one was different than the other. So they were, their tickets didn't match, just put it that way. And somehow it was to their advantage. So.
Yeah, I was, just to add to Mr. Bulkey's comments about rates, I was of the, in the,
of the impression that the rates for my garbage and recycling remain constant. Until I was standing around the kitchen tonight and my wife says, can you explain to me why our garbage bill went up three month, three dollars last month? She says, and didn't you tell me that you were going to have a discussion about waste management and are the refuse here in Lakewood? So I'm wondering, has that rate already gone into effect?
No, no, it hasn't.
I don't expect you to answer.
No, actually, I can't answer it. I can't answer it. The, the increase that you saw, that we all saw in 2019 is allowed under the contract at the CPI adjustment and/or tipping fee adjustment through, through the county or through the county process, rather. So that's, that's, that's allowed, that's covered.
So that just proved Mr. Bulkey's point.
But they want another 5% on top of that. And also, I'd like to point out that Waste Connections, of which LeMay is, that's the parent company, is the third largest waste hauler in the United States and Canada. It's an international firm. It's a three and a half billion dollar company and has over 11,000 employees. So just saying.
How about we charge them to pick up our stuff? If they're making a profit.
So, so again, I have strongly encouraged that they provide a proposal and a justification and they're more than welcome to come to this body, though I have been, I have cautioned them, but we will see what happens.
Yeah, show me the numbers.
Just real quick, a few more items. The Clover Park School District has gotten together their facility advisory committee to look at next steps as it relates to schools that they would like to, you know, include as part of a future capital bond proposal. And our own Mr. Bureau, by the way, is a part of that. And I think their first, their first meeting is, I think, later this week or next week? Maybe later this week. Legacy plan update, you heard from P. Rab on that. I did want to commend both Mary Dodsworth and Shannon Kelly Fong for developing a comprehensive outreach strategy and working with P. Rab and then this body as we get to a final update between now and 2020, which is a state mandate, because that, that document has to be refreshed every five or six years so that we can apply for RCO funding and other grant funding. So that's one of the key motivations for, for that. The, I think several of you attended the youth council. The feedback I got, it was a huge, huge success. Did want to let you know that we think it would be important for this body to represent, rather to recognize one of the key sponsors of that, the South Puget Intertribal Planning Agency. And so we're going to try, and I think it's city clerk, are we looking at May 20th, to recognize that body for all of their, all of their, all of their work. We, the Public Works Engineering Department is working on updating and updating an ILA and interlocal agreement that we have with Pierce County regarding essentially public work services like street striping and pavement markings and things like that. The challenge that we have is that the last time that agreement was updated in 2015, it created a threshold of $85,000. But given the work and service level that we're currently providing, it's, it needs to be more than that. And so we're going to be bringing that forward to you here in, in the near future, probably in the next month, month or two for your review and hopefully consideration. We'd like to get that in place sooner rather than later because we'd like to get Pierce County docketed to, you know, again, do the, the striping and some of the other things that pavement markings that they do for us on an annual basis.
You also mentioned factor work?
Yes. It's a pilot program and so the county, we've been working with a gentleman by the name of Dennis Hannburg and, and him and his team. And so, you know, basically the conversation we've been having is how can we better regionalize services? And right now, you know, we, we have a private contractor that does that and they do a good job.
For back.
That's correct. For, and, and for both factoring, but also street sweeping. And so we want to, we, we just want to, we want to basically take Pierce County for a ride, if you will, and test them out and kick the wheels and see if they can do it. Not only, you know, maybe at a, at a lower cost, but also from an efficiency standpoint. You know, how better can they perform than maybe our private? So we want to, so it's a, but it's, it's a test run, a test run, a pilot program. Let's see, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the comp plan amendments and it was not sparsely attended, so they kicked it out another month. They extended the public hearing to, to May. Want to just tip my hat to this body. I think as Ms. Kraus probably reported to you last week, the, the city got another double A bond rating for its upcoming bonds, bonds and reaffirmed the double A bond rating for our existing debt, which I think, as you all know, is a very, very positive reflection on not just this body, but the city, city as a whole. And we're in a very, very small group there in terms of cities of our size and scope that have that, that, that rating. I think last week, as you know, I traveled to Washington DC to participate in ICMA City County Management Senior Fellowship Program, which focuses on marrying up a, either a deputy garrison commander or a garrison commander with a city manager so that they can, you know, basically shadow, you know, shadow a city manager for a whole week. And so the person that has been assigned to me, by the way, there's 12, it's a class of 12, so there's 12 fellows and 12 sponsoring agencies. And so we are one of the 12 sponsoring agencies. And so the deputy garrison commander from US Army Garrison Rhineland Falls, which is in the west of Germany along the French border there, his name is Kevin Grease and he will be here from May 20th through May 24th, Monday through Friday. Actually, he'll be attending your city council meeting on the, on the 20th. And so he'll be having kind of on-the-ground experience of, you know, what I do, what our team does, what the city does. And so we'll have a full itinerary for him for, 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 for that, for that week. I did want to share with you over, over those two days, kind of some of my three takeaways from some of the discussions that we had. Kind of an opportunity, a threat and a challenge. The threat that, there's not a lot of things that I don't get sleep over, but this one I'm now starting to wake up in the middle of the night. Cybersecurity, which is a bit of an oxymoron, but just the vulnerable ability that exists in the United States. One of the things that the military folks talked about is until recently, you know, we viewed our military installations as sanctuaries here in the continental United States, just because of the oceans. Well, guess what? That is no longer the case. And even though our military facilities are hardened and it's hard to crack our military, you know, entities in terms of a cybersecurity attack, the example they used was say there's a, a problem elsewhere in the country and 18th Airborne Corps out of Bragg and Pope needs to deploy. Well, a cyber attack on the surrounding areas of Fayetteville and the like can create all kinds of chaos that could potentially ground and prevent 18th Airborne Corps from deploying. And that was just a real simple example and they, they had some, they had some others. The challenge that the military is facing these days is recruiting. You know, the majority of, of, of military folks in the army came from the rural communities. But that's no longer going to be the case as we go out into the future just because of population trends. So they're trying to get into the urban suburban communities and get a higher percentage of folks to join the military there, particularly the army. One of the challenges they face is they recognize that their installations are quote-unquote dumb installations. And what they mean by that is young people today, not even the millennials, but the next group, the Z's, this is a quote, "They don't want to talk to each other. They want to do everything on their phone. They want to order food. They don't want to have a car. They want to get transportation. They want to do this, that and the other thing in that little, in that little phone that they have or that smart device that they have." And the military needs to adapt to that if they're going to attract that group of folks. And so that's a, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a significant, that's a significant challenge. So when you couple the threat and the challenges that the military has, I think there's an opportunity where a city can actually help. And the other thing that we talked about was these inter, inter, intergovernmental service agreements, IGSAs, where, and it's relatively new, only a couple of places in the United States have them, but basically where, you know, a neighboring community can help the base and provide them services. And you might recall me giving you an update about a month or so ago, the army kicked that off, or rather JBLM kicked that off with everybody around us. So when I was back there, and Tom Knight, by the way, Chief of Staff of JBLM is a fellow. And so we spent some time back there, actually flying there and then there for two days and then flying back. And I told Tom, I says, you know, Tom, I asked Tom, I says, you know, I says, it's all well and good, you got everybody together in one room, but I mean, I was like, that's like herding cats. I said, let me offer you this from Lakewood's perspective. Let us know what we can do to help you so you can focus on these other issues that you need to be focusing on. So if you need help cutting the grass, if you need help with snow. So if you need help cutting the grass, if you need help with snow plowing, I got a whole list. If, if you want to piggyback on our contracts for pavement patching and chip sealing and asphalt overlay and factoring and street sweeping and the list goes on and on, I said, let us know. And I said, rather, you know, just send that list over to us. Let us do that work. Let us rally some other partners to help you. And so I just wanted to give you guys a courtesy heads up that I've asked for that. One of the areas, and actually, it was interesting, you were having that discussion earlier this evening, one of the areas that I think we can create a win-win is in the area of maybe just general park maintenance and right-of-way maintenance. That is an area that as we look out into the future, that I think we need to increase in our own community. We do not have the financial capability to do that unless we bring in new sources of revenue. However, what we could do, if the, if J B L M has some areas that we could help, we take their revenue source, provide that service, and if there's something that's left over that we can help buy down our general fund and improve service in our community, then let's do that. So let's approach it from a business standpoint. Let's approach it as if we are the contractor or the vendor, if you will. I'm not saying that this is going to come to fruition, but I think it's important that we at least take a proactive approach in addressing it. It's been a concept that's been around for a few years and J B L M has initiated it. And so what I'm suggesting is that let's work with them and see where, where, where things, where things will fall.
So just, a note for your information, I, I talked with retired Lieutenant General Mike Ferrer a few weeks ago and we're supposed to have, he's supposed to, said he wanted to get ahold of me and follow up on it, but he's, he's now in Columbus, Ohio as the CEO of a National Military Museum thing that's being built. But he's also a consultant for a company that does, a communications company does things on bases and they're having resistance, including here, with upgrading to five G for that, it, it, smart, getting rid of the dumb base. And it's, it's totally a logical argument because the army's saying, well, we have to go through all these security protocols to do this. And he's saying, and they're saying, no, we're, we're not introducing anything new. It's already there. This is like a brighter light bulb or a, a bigger water pipe. It's not something new. It's just an improvement on what's already there and people need this to call over and do other things and, you know, the army can't get out of its own way.
Also, just wanted to give the council a heads up, over in the eastern part of the city by Lake City, by Nottingham Road and North Gate Road, that area, there are some open right-of-ways and those were some areas that we have ongoing illicit dumping. And so earlier today, our crew was out there and they put in those big concrete blocks to prevent vehicles from driving back in there and doing some dumping. Some neighbors were concerned that they can no longer, you know, walk back there, but actually, they can squeeze through. It's unfortunate that people are doing illegal dumping back there, but we got to do something to stop it. And so those are some of the, actually, I'm going to probably have a, a more detailed update for you here in the next month or two on that. We've got a team together working on things. But that was one of the real quick, low-hanging fruit items that they identified. We got these areas where people are able to drive into and it's a public right-of-way, let's just block it off and then they can't get in there. And then if they do figure out a way to do that, then we have other ways of dealing with it, you know, cameras and things like that.
That's along the fence line, kind of?
That's correct. Somebody made the comment, well, maybe the dumping is coming over the fence line. I'm very familiar with that area because that's a former land nav course and there's, no, that's, nobody's hauling in traffic, nobody's hauling in trash across the base into that back fence line area. You know where I'm talking about?
Exactly where you are.
Yeah, so. Just real quick on your calendar, this Saturday is Park Appreciation Day and so three parks. We took Ward's Lake off because there's a lot of effort going on there right now, but the three parks, Fort Stillicum, Springbrook and Harry Tard. So those are the areas, if you want to come out and do some sweat equity. And then on May second, which is a week from Wednesday, Pierce County Law Enforcement Memorial Service hosted by the City of Lakewood and I know the mayor will be the emcee of that event.
No, I-
Is it Thursday?
Actually, I'm, I'm keynote.
Keynote, I'm sorry, I apologize. Keynote, keynote.
Chief's emcee.
Emcee, but the mayor will be the keynote speaker at that event. It's May second, I thought it was a Wednesday. Is it a?
Fourth, Thursday.
Is it a Thursday? Okay, it's a Thursday.
Is it third, fourth?
Second, May second.
It's out here somewhere.
And then that weekend, the fourth and fifth is our spring cleanup over at the transfer station at LeMay or Waste Connections refuse.
Questions for the city manager? Right, council comments, Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just an update, on Tuesday, I attended the two thousand nineteen scholarship celebration at technical college and it's the one that they normally had at lunchtime. And we were talking about tonight, how this college is needed, how they can improve some of the things that's happening in our community. It switched to a dinner. And when it was the lunch and they got twenty thousand dollars, as a dinner, they got forty thousand. And that was the last count that I heard, so. And, and the, the room was full of people, so it was well-attended, great. Proceeds will be used for the emergency funds for the students and scholarships as well. And then on, I think it was Wednesday, I attended the Planning Commission meeting for Mr. Branstad, because he was out of town. And they had a area on about the military district at J B L M, but they didn't have a quorum, so that was moved till May. So that's all I have.
Mr. Bulkey? Community and school's going to move to a dinner?
What?
Is communities and schools going to move to a dinner now?
Yeah, well, I don't know. We have a new executive director though now, since she has taken over the reins. And then just say on Saturday, I went and picked up garbage with about seven other people from the North Lakewood Neighborhood Association along Onyx Drive. We had a very nice time and it didn't start raining on us, so. And the city provides all the gloves and the bags and the little picker-uppers and they work very well, so.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No comment, but I do have a question. And it's my historical background speaking, and it's probably directed to the city manager, the city attorney. Is it possible for the city to make a donation to the rebuilding or the reconstruction of parts of Notre Dame? It is a symbol of western civilization and I think, you know, we being who we are, I was just curious if we could do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You could do it individually, I don't know.
Probably not.
Well, I-
It's a-
It's-
It's, it'd be a gift of public funds, except it's a state-owned building, but does that state count?
It's just a thought.
Is it a state-owned building?
It's a state-owned, in, in, no, in nineteen oh five, the French government nationalized all church buildings below, before a certain date because they were falling into disrepair.
And that was part of the thinking behind the question because we're not giving it to the church per se. We are giving it to a structure under the control of the French government. So I was, I was just thinking about that and I'll be quiet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I, I'll put that as most random comment of the year. Mr. Simpson?
Hey, at least I'm not old.
Ms. Barth? Mr. Whalen?
I just want to apologize for my thirty minutes of lateness tonight, but I got to go to the McMiniman's opening, the soft opening. It was tremendous downtown, so fabulous, fabulous structure with all sorts of cool restaurants and gives you an idea, if you build it, it will come. So get a chance to go out and enjoy it. That's it.
And on Tuesday, I went to Change of Command for two-two Strike Brigade has a new commanding officer. J. Misselli is, is departing for, you're in Afghanistan?
Already?
Uh, he, very shortly. And his wife and daughter's staying here, the son's going to start at West Point, so. They are undergoing that. Colonel Chang Chung is taking over. Seems like a really good guy. Got to go meet him with the city manager and then see him briefly at the Change of Command and he's very articulate from a military family, as many are. His father's retired lieutenant colonel, his younger brother's a captain. They've got several other, they've got three, three generations of, of army, so. So I think we've got a, a good, a good replacement for our community connector and we'll build on that relationship. Anything further? Then we're adjourned.